Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. We are lucky to have Ms. Barrios here who will open us up with her spiel.
Good evening. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedure items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can pay and speak at the end. The participated public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you will be promoted to a panelist. This means that you will appear on camera. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student or S at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other special needs. When your time has elapsed, you'll see Vice President Babbitt holding a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionar es un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que actualmente puede ser cerca de las 10, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el primer periodo del comentario público. Para comentar por video con Gerecia, por favor de levantar la mano y haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección el botón Levantar la mano or Raise Your Hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. Por favor de hacerlo ya, ya que espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Actualmente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. La presidente de la mesa directiva autorará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otra o cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado, será promocionada a panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan 15 segundos, le avanza un cartel. Si sigue cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much for that introduction, Ms. Barrios. I will officially call the meeting to order at 7:09 PM today. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
We have our student director. Yes, I see here, student director, Anjuna Mascarena Swan.
Present.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Alper.
Here.
Director Anna Basu Dev.
Present.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
President Kadeja Brown.
Present. Thank you so much. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, which will be to approve the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
President Brown, may I jump in on this one? There's a, I'd like to put several amendments to the agenda if I can. So several items that we'd like to remove from the agenda. From the consent calendar, I'd like to remove item 11.10.8 as well as item 11.10.13. And then we'd also like to pull from the agenda this evening, item 13.3.
All right. Is there a, are there any other corrections?
I also, I need to re-cues from one of the consent items on the purchases and contracts, and I don't have the number right in front of me. It's 10 point.
I have that number. Yes, it's 11.10.12.
11.10.12. So if we could move that out of consent or?
Yes, thank you so much. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda, approve the agenda with the necessary corrections, including the items listed by the superintendent and moving item 10.11.12 to action from consent?
I'll move that.
It's been moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Basu Dev. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Mascarena Swan.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yeah, yes, but I'm, did the numbers get switched in the item for lifelong? Can we clarify what the item is, the number?
Yes.
The number that Dr. Stevens said, I think, was reversed from the number that you said.
The number that I think Dr. Stevens gave us is 11.10.12. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the motion is for item 11.10.12.
Yes.
Director Ty Alper.
Yes.
Director Basu Dev.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. The motions pass and the agenda is approved. Vice President Babbitt, can you please report out from closed session?
Yes, closed session began today at 6:00 PM. All members were present and we heard an update for all items on the agenda and gave direction. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Vice President Babbitt. We will now move to our public comment opportunity in our agenda. As a reminder from Ms. Barrios's opening earlier, if you are a student and if you are wishing to speak to us during this public comment period, this is the perfect opportunity to please raise your hand using the Raise Hand function on Zoom. And if you are a student, please put student or S before or at the end of your name. That way you will be given priority to speak to us this evening. The public comment period is now open and we have quite a number of public commentators this evening. And so in just a few moments, we will begin our public comments period. But before we do, we have a very special guest with us on the dais this evening. And that is Executive Director Erin Rhodes, who is here on behalf of Berkeley Public Schools Fund. I am super excited that Berkeley Public Schools Fund will be helping us as our Wednesday timekeeper during our public comment period. And to begin us off with this, we have our very own executive director. So Ms. Rhodes, welcome. We are very delighted to have you this evening. We have a number of speakers, Ms. Rhodes. Would you like to go ahead and say something? No, just hello to the people.
I'm happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you so much for being here. We have a number of public commentators, public and Ms. Rhodes. And so we will give everyone one minute of speaking time. Ms. Rhodes does have a timer on her background, so please, public, pay very close attention to Ms. Rhodes' box and the timer associated with it. As well, I'm going to ask that you maybe set your own one-minute timer, and I'm rambling at this point so that you can make any corrections to your public comment that will help you reduce it down to one minute. Unfortunately, when the one minute has ended, I will give you a reminder that your time has ended and will ask you to quickly come to a close. That way, we will have an opportunity to hear from all of our community members who are wishing to speak to us this evening. We have 30 hands raised for public comment. So we will begin the public comment period with Lynn Silver and we will end our public comment period this evening with Amanda Hall Jackson. Again, we will begin with Lynn Silver, followed by Rob. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Lynn Silver?
President Brown, I believe we have students that I see on here.
Ah, yes, yes, we do. Thank you so much. I see two students. So we'll actually begin with Roth, who is a student, followed by Alamar. Thank you for that, Ms. Barrios. And Ms. Rhodes, again, as a reminder, we have one minute on the timer for everyone. We will begin when we see your timer.
Hello, my name is Rahaf and I'm a seventh grader in the BIS virtual learning program. My dad is a single parent and I'm the oldest daughter, so I can't afford to get sick. I'm speaking today to ask that you keep the virtual option in the BIS program. With the mask mandate lifted, it's the safest way to study without risking anything. I also believe that our teachers should maintain their positions. I highly encourage you to not change teachers. My current teachers, Ms. Filarka and Mr. Lee, are amazing. They're also pretty familiar with platforms we use every day, such as Zoom and Google Classroom, as well as Google Meet. So please keep this virtual option open and keep its teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rahaf.
Yeah, thank you. I have also my daughter, Lee, and also can I talk after that? Can I have also my one minute?
I believe you have 10 more seconds left in your one minute. Please go right ahead.
Okay, Lee, can you start?
Hi, I'm Lynn. I'm a sixth grader in the BIS virtual learning program. We need the program. Many parents can't send their children to in campus schools for many reasons. I was enrolled in this program due to the pandemic while lifting the mask mandate. I cannot go back to being exposed to large gatherings. Please keep this program. My teachers, Ms. Filarka and Mr. Lee, are great teachers. I want them to be my seventh grade teachers as well. Please keep the teachers in their position. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here this evening. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Alamar next, followed by Lynn Silver?
I am having difficulty promoting Alamar to a panelist.
Yeah, we cannot go in the campus and be involved at any kind of risk after the mask mandate had been lifted at school. In fact, 24 units a week per child is challenging. However, having this virtual learning program makes things every much better and give my daughter's opportunity to study safely. In this program, I am glad to meet Ms. Filarka and Mr. Lee, who are excellent and cooperative teachers. My daughters enjoy their classes and want to keep their teachers for next year. So please keep this program and their teachers for next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alamar, I'm understanding that there may be some clinical difficulties with promoting you, so we'll try to go ahead and come back to you if that's okay. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Lynn Silver, followed by Rob?
Yes, we'll do.
Hi Lynn, welcome. Hi Lynn, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Lynn Silver. I'm a pediatrician and a BUSD mother. Although my daughter's graduated, I also direct the Safely Opening Schools Project at the Public Health Institute. And I'm here this evening to speak in support of the resolution to support SB 1479 on school testing. That bill will contingent on appropriation require first that the state maintain the technical support programs that it took quite a while to develop and get into place to help school districts with testing for COVID-19 as needed. And second, it will require that school districts have their own plan in place to address testing needs based on what the state is recommending or requiring in the epidemiology as it plays out over the coming months. It is not an unfunded mandate. As I mentioned, it's contingent on appropriation. But what it does do is make sure that our California school districts remain ready for whatever comes next. Hopefully a readiness that will not be needed, but as we have all to predict. So we request that you support that bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Rob, followed by Jonas Lomary Brownell.
Thank you. I'm here to, because I got an email today or yesterday about a letter that the BUSD Board of Directors is going to write to Senator Pan on behalf of the school district to please strongly support SB 871. I don't know why this is not being more public and I am opposed to the board speaking on behalf of the district without names being known who is on the board that is supporting this bill. So I'd like you to redraft that letter. I know from the September, when Director Sinai says the goal of the board is to get as many people vaccinated as possible, that's a quote. But this is nothing to do, the reasons, the rationale in the letter, this is, I think, just an end game that they're trying to do. And I would strongly urge that anyone listening to oppose the board writing this letter and putting our children's education into the play of politics. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rob. And next we'll have Jonas Lomary Brownell, followed by Dinah Macy.
Good evening, BUSD Community and School Board. I serve as BUSD's Heric Hospital teacher. Last year, I also worked with families and their first, second, third, and fourth grade students in BUSD's Virtual Assisted Homeschool Program. In this assisted homeschool program, the parents are the main teachers, teaching their child or children 18 hours per week. I understand BUSD proposes entirely cutting next year the Virtual Academy. We heard from folks using that program just this evening in which students receive their virtual instruction daily from BUSD teacher, teachers. So the proposal is that by cutting that, these families can just move into the assisted homeschool program with suddenly families having to teach their children at home. These are very different programs. So this will basically say to all those families, there is no more virtual option for you. These are some of our neediest families and this is a evolving, not-ending pandemic. Save the Virtual Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have, I lost my place. Next, I think we are going to have, oh, Dinah Macy, followed by Story Center. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dinah Macy and I'm BUSD's Virtual K5 Assisted Homeschool Teacher. I have invested this past year into collaborating with homeschooling families in all elementary grades and I can confidently say that all students and families are now flourishing. The only virtual option proposed for next year is assisted homeschool. Homeschooling is challenging and it is simply not a viable option for all families. Many families need the daily schedule and instruction that Virtual Academy provides. BUSD has also stated that in-person educators will take on all virtual students for next year. In-person and virtual learning require vastly different materials, preparation, and skillset. Asking these teachers to bear this responsibility will be a detriment to all students in person and virtual. Please make the smart decision here for safety and equity. Keep the Virtual Academy and keep dedicated full-time virtual teachers. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Story Center, followed by Liza Lutker.
President Brown, I am having difficulty promoting Story.
Oh, no worries at all. Thank you, Story Center. If you can maybe adjust your technology, we'll come back around to you. Can you promote the next panelist, followed by Torina Blackman?
Hi, everybody. My name's Liza Lutker. I am a parent of a fourth grader at Sylvia Mendez and a sixth grader at Longfellow. I'm also an epidemiologist who works on indoor environments. And I'm here to strongly support your letter in support of the resolution, or resolution in support of 1479. We know what works well in COVID to make sure that our schools can stay open and that is good ventilation, vaccination, masks for those who want to protect themselves, and testing. And we know that we are going to have to use these tools again and again and again. And 1479 makes sure that the state pending appropriations can help us pay for that. There's no reason not to support this and I really, really urge you to go ahead and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Torina Blackman, followed by student Tyler Hallen. We'll go ahead and start with Story Center. Story Center, welcome.
Thank you so much for having this meeting. I want to follow up with a comment made about the letter written by the board to Senator Pan. This is regarding a bill that would require vaccination for students to attend school in California. At this point, Berkeley has a fairly high vaccination rate among staff and students. And yet we continue to have COVID in our schools among the vaccinated. I believe it's something like 80% of cases are among vaccinated. But that's information gotten from a FOIA request, so you'll have to do the research yourself. As far as I'm concerned, I've always been interested in homeschooling. I've been doing BIS with my children for two years and I can't think of anything I would rather do than thank you guys if you go ahead with this vaccine mandate.
Thank you.
To say I can wipe my hands completely of the Berkeley Public School clown show. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Before we move on to our next speaker, which will be Tyler Hallen. Typically, we don't, as board members, respond to public comment at all. But I wanted to take this moment of personal privilege to let you all know or just remind the community that we did remove item 13.3 from our agenda tonight in regards to the letter. I just wanted to give that information out in case there were other comments that were made specifically for that agenda item for this meeting. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that shift to the agenda as we continue to hear your public comments. Next, we will have Tyler, followed by student Ziva.
Hi, my name is Tyler Hallen and I just had COVID and I got it from school. Thankfully, I was vaccinated. I think it's more, I think it's important for kids to be tested weekly in schools so kids, so kids don't get sick like I just did. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tyler. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote student Ziva?
Hi, my name, good evening, my name is Ziva. I have an amazing teacher. Her name is Ms. Blackman. She is wonderful. And I encourage the school district to keep Virtual Academy open because I can't bear to see my family sick. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ziva. Now we will hear from Ms. Blackman. Can you please promote Torina Blackman, followed by Monique Carr?
Hi, my name is Torina Blackman. I am one of the Virtual Academy teachers. I teach second and third grade. I've been with the district for 11 years and I'm proud to be a Berkeley teacher. I am requesting that you reconsider the virtual option for next year. There are many families that need this option. It is an equity issue. I was an equity teacher in this district for three years and we push equity, equity, equity. And yet, when we have opportunities like this to really show that we care for our families, we sometimes miss the boat. So this is our opportunity again to allow our students that are from multi-generational families to have this option. I appreciate your reconsideration in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman. Next, we will hear from Monique Carr, followed by Gladys Ocampo Stout. Hi, welcome.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Thanks. I just wanted to emphasize and applaud what other supervisors said, especially the, I think she was the first student who spoke, or the first family who spoke, said memorably, "I can't afford to get sick. My father's a single parent. I'm a single mother of three. I can't afford to get sick. My kids can't afford to get sick. Long COVID is a huge unknown and we still don't have the data on long COVID. I'm already suffering from one post-viral syndrome." Y'all, anyone who doesn't currently have a post-viral syndrome, you don't want long COVID. I know I don't want long COVID. Please keep a robust virtual option. The virtual teachers like Dinah Macy, about Filarka, Anna Martinez, they are masters of the format. Please keep them. They are an asset to our school. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ocampo Stout, followed by Wendy Bloom.
Good evening, Superintendent Stevens, President Brown, and School Board members. My name is Gladys Ocampo Stout and I'm here on behalf of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. We want to speak to you today regarding the budget for the multilingual master plan, students, and as well as SB 1479. We are asking for the board to support SB 1479, which will help fund school-based COVID testing in schools. We are also here to advocate for a thought-out budget for the multilingual master plan, for developing it, the implementation, and the maintenance. We would like to see a budget for the implementation for years two and three of the ELL master plan. This should also include a budget for staffing and a budget for professional development for teachers and staff. Also, currently, the staffing is not commensurate with a number of multilingual students in the district. This plan and our English language learners have been underfunded and underserved. This is a moral and a legal issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladys. Next, we will move to Wendy Bloom, followed by Wade.
Hello. Thank you to the school board for bringing up the resolution in support of SB 1479. As a registered nurse at Children's Hospital Oakland for the last 35 years, caring for very vulnerable children, I support having widespread testing programs at our schools. The kids I care for are often left out of these conversations when we talk about equity in school attendance. You may believe the risk to kids from COVID is low, but it's not true for many of the kids I care for that have cancer, sickle cell anemia, Crohn's, and other very vulnerable patients. It's not time for us to take our eye off of COVID. It's still sadly here and we need to be, to remain vigilant to protect all of our students. I thank you for supporting this resolution. I hope you will all vote yes. And please, I want to make sure everyone get yourselves and your family vaccinated and get your boosters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Wade, followed by Yvette Filarka. Hi, Wade, welcome.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you. I oppose your SB 871 support letter. I've just learned because you just said that you have pulled it from the speeding. I still want to make my comments. Your letter says it is written on behalf of BUSD. My family is part of the BUSD and oppose this letter and the harmful bill it supports. I do not believe BUSD has a right or authority to speak for me or my family on this body autonomy issue. Whoever wrote and supports this letter is clearly misinformed of the science of the COVID-19 vaccine. There is no evidence that the COVID-19 vaccine is a cornerstone to reduce the spread of COVID-19 because it doesn't. And if you are writing such a letter, you must not be deceptive with the science or the facts. You must be aware by now that the jab does not stop transmission and that the longstanding definition of vaccination was changed to get this drug to be categorized as a vaccination. That is because it does not stop transmission or infection and therefore a mandate to protect others is scientifically and medically useless. Actually, worse than that is the mandate will be harmful, discriminatory, and the very opposite of equitable. If you really look at the data, you would see that with each shot comes real risk. Yet the survival rate for children from COVID-19 is nearly 100%. I firmly believe the shots are more dangerous to my children than the virus and getting the shots does not protect others. This ends the fundamental, on my children's body autonomy has got to stop. I'm glad you pulled the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Yvette Filarka, followed by Lindsay Melville.
Yvette Filarka, I'm a virtual teacher in the K8 Independent Studies Program. I completely disagree with the previous speaker, but I'm here to speak because the school board needs to reject Stevens' recommendations to cut the K5 Virtual Academy and eliminate all virtual-only teaching positions. The number one reason families choose virtual is for having a medically fragile family member or student. And the vast majority of families and teachers in our program are families and teachers of color who have already suffered far too much loss from COVID. I will quote from BUSD's mission. I will quote from BUSD's mission statement. "Our families and community are integral to the success of our students and schools. Our diverse community is passionate about equitable educational outcomes. Our schools are vital centers of community life, enriched by the diversity of our city and welcoming to all families." You know what this statement doesn't say? Only if you are fully healthy, able, and willing to risk your own and your family's health in an ongoing worldwide pandemic. Keep the virtual academy and all the virtual teachers.
Thank you. Next, we will have Lindsay Nofelt, followed by Tenisa Santiago.
I was also planning to speak out in opposition to SB eight seventy-one, so thank you for removing that item and helping to keep our school board focused on education and not politics. We should not support bills that will divide our community and harm educational outcomes for our most vulnerable learners. So I will instead comment on C-SACE. It's very good news that RTI is going through a standardization process, but we're still promoting LLI and other interventions that have large gaps for many students. That seems short-sighted and continues the same pattern that we see in tier-one education. Too many commercial curricula are intentionally designed for a narrow population. Students who read at grade level, speak English as their first language, and whose identities reflect the dominant culture. I want to flag that Book Nook has so many technical scheduling issues that virtual teachers are leaving in droves. We know that learning is cumulative. When we get early learning and literacy right, so many other things fall into place. Early math is built on literacy because you can't solve a math problem if you can't read the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the last part of that quote. That will be on my next shirts. Next, Tenisa Santiago.
Hi, yes, my name is Tenisa Santiago. I'm the parent of a first grader and a fifth grader at Malcolm X Elementary, and I'm here tonight to request your support for Senate Bill fourteen seventy-nine. SB fourteen seventy-nine will help fund school-based COVID-19 testing in schools and expand that capacity to serve preschools, after-school programs, and childcare centers, but not my dog. BUSD's strong COVID testing program played an important role in keeping our students and staff safely in schools this year, and it's been instrumental in making many parents, myself and my partner among them, feel safe to send our children to school. This bill is a fundamental part of the work to keep schools open and safe. We cannot repeat the chaos of this past January with such high percentages of staff and students infected with COVID-19 with Omicron. Seven members of my daughter's first-grade class contracted COVID in the span of one January week this year, and I can't even imagine what the numbers might have looked like without prompt testing and communication. We all know by now that students' loss of access to school during the pandemic is a public health and an educational equity crisis. To prevent any cycle of school openings and closures, we have to develop concrete statewide and local testing plans. Thank you in advance for your support, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Tenisa. Next, we will have Sarah Carver, followed by Mark Ergood.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Carver, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Malcolm X Elementary. I've been lucky this year to have a class size of eighteen students. Because of this, I can see a real difference that smaller class sizes have on teaching and learning. One small example of this impact academically is how, after my whole class mini-listen and writing, I can conference one-on-one with half my students on their work every day and still meet with those every day that need it the most. If I had twenty-six students, which many of our classes do have this year, I could only conference with about each student only once or maybe twice each week. And over the course of a year, this makes a huge difference. This year, I have had time to reach out to parents personally about their child's needs and work with them on home-to-school connections often. A family's involvement is one of the most important factors in student success, and having that time is vital. Even if we can't have eighteen students in every class, we need to stick to the twenty-three-to-one ratio as close as possible. And BFT's class-size proposals will allow this to happen and is a small step towards making smaller class sizes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Mark Ergood, followed by Dorothea Durand.
Hi, I'm Mark Ergood. I'm part of the Equal Opportunity Now, By Any Means Necessary Civil Rights Caucus in the Oakland Teachers Union and work with Yan Bham, people including Yvette Flarca in Berkeley. Yan Bham supports, and I support, the continuation and expansion of the Virtual Academy. I teach in Oakland. We've had a full virtual program. I teach virtually. We've had a full virtual program, K through twelve, full day of school, all of this year, and are going into next year with the same thing. We're now the second or third-largest school in Oakland. There's a huge demand for virtual education, to keep children safe, to keep families safe. If the program is funded and quality and has full-time teachers, and it's a program parents can use and teachers can teach in and students can learn in. Berkeley seems to be trying to degrade the program so that no one would feel like they could possibly actually send their child to it because it's so low-quality. Get rid of the staff, get rid of the hours. So keep the virtual program.
Thank you so much, Mark. Next, we'll go to Dorothea Durand, followed by Rosa.
Hi, my name is Dorothea Durand. I'm a Berkeley taxpayer who's very interested in education. I want to commend the Berkeley Unified for deciding to honor Jewish-American Heritage Month in May this year and hopefully in years to come. In light of the fact that the ethnic studies curriculum in Berkeley schools omits the history and contributions of Jewish-Americans, the decision to observe Jewish-American Heritage Month takes on even more significance. But it is not enough to counteract the pervasive discriminatory propaganda that has become the norm in teaching about the Jewish people and about Israel. BUSD needs to commit to teaching a more complete and accurate curriculum regarding Jewish history, the history of the Holocaust, and the history of the State of Israel. The perpetuation, perpetration of demonization, delegitimization, and the application of a double standard to Israel is fomenting antisemitism on our college campuses. The lack of understanding that the Jewish people are an ethnicity, a people, a religion, and a national identity is promoting racist behaviors against our Jewish students. If public education doesn't do anything to teach back to our students, for example, that antisemitism is a form of racism and that racism only apply to people of color, then BUSD, among other school districts and universities, is responsible for encouraging...
Thank you. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but we have other speakers this evening. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much for joining us. Next, we will have Rosa, followed by Anne Song.
Hi, my name is Rosa. My daughter's Siva. She just spoke a little bit earlier. Teaching in Virtual Academy, we're just trying to encourage, you know, the members to keep the program alive because we have vulnerable members in our family right now. Especially, I have a baby who decided to be born at twenty-eight weeks. He's very premature. And we can't risk to send Siva in person to school because he's very at risk of any respiratory illness. And also, yes, to keep Siva safe, and it wouldn't be like fair for her to keep her mask when she gets home and keep him away from the baby because she's very attached to him. Also, I lost my dad to COVID, and I'm still, you know, going through really hard times based on that. We have vulnerable family members in our house, and so we really need to keep this program going for the safer family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Next, we will welcome Anne Song, followed by Sam Matsumoto.
Hi, please do not cut the BAS virtual program and its teachers. It's been vital for my multigenerational household with medically fragile members. It's very different from the standard BAS program, which requires twenty hours of parental involvement. As a parent of a first and sixth grader, this is forty hours per week. I would have to quit my job for the required support and wouldn't be able to afford to live in Berkeley. This is just not an equitable option for working-class families. The standard BAS program doesn't offer group sessions remotely, and the virtual K through five and middle school programs hold regular group meetings. Ms. Flarca and Ms. Jenkins have worked hard to foster a rich online learning community, and for families who must stay secluded to keep their fragile members safe, please do not further isolate these children. Children learn as much, if not more, from their peers, and they have been thriving in these online communities. I urge BUSD to continue the virtual ed program and its wonderful teachers for the upcoming school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will have Sam Matsumoto, followed by Aya.
Hello, BUSD School Board and Executive Cabinet. My name is Sam Matsumoto. I'm the second-generation BUSD educator and Berkeley resident. I also have the privilege of teaching photography in a freshman bridge cohort at Berkeley High School, and Director Si and I were excited for your visit tomorrow. This is my fourth year as a Berkeley High School teacher, and I'm speaking tonight in support of BFT's contract negotiations for smaller class sizes and increased compensation. In my photography classes, up to thirty-two students are enrolled. Our darkroom only has twenty enlargers, meaning that students sometimes do not have access to the equipment they need to complete coursework. Additionally, the physical classroom space is not designed to seat this many students. I have science tables that are designed to hold two students, and in order to just have enough chairs for everyone, I often need to put a chair at the end, so there's no leg room for the students that sit at ninety degrees from each other. And especially in high school, their legs can be quite long. Working with my bridge cohort, I can directly observe how my students are better served with the individual attention they need from their teachers. This happens most when their classes are not filled with more than thirty-two students. BFT's class-size proposal creates more bounds between classes so that each student can be served better. Also, as we know, the cost of living has increased, an immense challenge in our area where affordable housing is next to impossible to find. For me personally, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have to cut you off, but thank you for being here. Next, we will have Aya, followed by Jason Winnet. Hi, welcome.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hit the mute button. My name is, yeah, my name is Aya, and my child has attended the second-grade Virtual Academy with Ms. Torina Blackman. Today, I am calling in to point out and underscore what Ms. Blackman and others have said that keeping the virtual program open is an equity issue. Cultures that live multigenerationally are most impacted. I've noticed that Latinx and certain Asian families live multigenerationally. And no doubt, there are many other cultures of color who live multigenerationally because it is customary to do so. Please do not miss the embedded equity issues. There are still many uncertainties with COVID. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Jason, followed by our last commenter for this public comment period, Amanda Hall-Jackson. Hi, Jason. Can you go ahead and unmute for us so that we can hear the public comment?
Thank you. Good evening. And I am born and raised here in East Bay, Berkeley, K through twelve in the Berkeley Public School System, graduated UC Berkeley as well. And I am here to question why would there be so-called COVID testing for tests that can't diagnose disease according to the developer of the PCR test, Carey Mullis? And so, that's my question to you and anyone else listening. And that further, with respect to any and all so-called COVID vaccinations, since that agenda item was pulled by one of, I'm not sure who it was, the nurse working for the school district was promoting vaccinations, it seems like the wrong place to do it on this meeting. However, kids don't get COVID. They're more likely to die from flu, so it makes no sense. But they are dying from myocarditis from these so-called vaccinations. So that's my input for today. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments. Next, we will move to Amanda Hall-Jackson, who will not be the last public commenter. Our last public commenter for this evening will be Elizabeth Gibb, who is a student. So first, before we get to you, Elizabeth, hi, I see you waving. Before we get to you, we will go to Amanda Hall-Jackson.
Hello, good evening. My name is Amanda Hall-Jackson, and I am a first-year special education teacher at Willer Middle School. I have been in this, I've been in this district for about thirteen years in special education, ten years as an IA. I am here to support new teachers in the hoops that they have to jump through to serve our students and provide for ourselves and our family. As I was encouraged as an IA to become a teacher and was very excited about taking on this new venture. Unfortunately, I knew that I would have to, I work multiple jobs and knew that I would have to quit one in order to work longer. My caseload, I have a caseload of twenty-one and co-teach for classes. But now, I have to choose between supporting my students and choosing to work closer to home. I live in Vacaville, unfortunately, because I cannot work in, I mean, live in Berkeley due to how much the pay is. I am here to ask for higher pay so that me and my daughter and the students who look at me as a role model are able to, I can continue to be a role model to students who look like me.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. Next, we will go over to Elizabeth Gibb.
Hello. My name is Liam Gibb, and I'm in third grade at BAM. Please vote in support of the Senate Bill fourteen seventy-nine to help fund COVID testing at school. Please support testing so all kids can feel more safe at school.
I'm Elizabeth. I'm his mom. I'm a pediatric pulmonary doctor at Children's Hospital. I take care of many vulnerable members of our community. And we've seen the schools can stay open with a layered approach with masking, with vaccines, and with use of widespread testing. Please help keep us ready for whatever comes with us next.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Liam, for being here this evening and for your comments. Next, we will move to our committee comments. Are there any committee comments this evening? Ms. Barrios, I believe that Isaiah Izzy Rogers is here on behalf of the Audit Committee comment. Can you please promote Izzy?
I thought Dr. I thought he was going to be speaking at the presentation, the discussion item on the audit.
Oh, is it a discussion item that he's speaking on, or is there an audit committee presentation?
I think it is the discussion item. Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Stevens.
I'm happy to do either one.
Okay, we'll wait for, thank you, Izzy. I appreciate your willingness. We'll wait for the discussion item. Thank you. Are there any other union comments this evening, committee comments, rather, this evening? Seeing then, we will go ahead and move on to union comments. Ms. Barrios, do we have something from BFT, I believe, to play? Yes. Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent Stevens and the Berkeley Unified School Board. I am Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. BUSD and BFT have been at the bargaining table four times since March, discussing important issues that impact our students and staff. We have many proposals currently being discussed, many of which fix inconsistent district practices or codify current practices. I wanted to focus today on one of our larger priorities, class size. The number of students in a class hits at the very heart of what we do on a daily basis. It impacts our ability to build strong relationships with our students and families, determines how much time we can spend on personal written feedback on classwork, is connected to best serving the needs of our students with IEPs and other students who need one-to-one interventions. Our current contract language is so broad that we have ended up with widely varying class sizes at both the elementary and secondary levels. This might come as a surprise because Berkeley voters have passed the important BSET measure, This might come as a surprise because Berkeley voters have passed the important BSET measure where the majority of the measure pays down class size. This is true and it does happen. It just does not happen uniformly. The measure itself does not have enough language to prevent gray levels at certain sites from being too large. It does not have enough language to prevent a teacher from having five classes of thirty-four students each at secondary, even in core classes. Our proposals are pragmatic, realistic, and most importantly, will solve the problem at the margins. We are not proposing to reduce the average class size numbers. We're proposing to keep our classes within a reasonable range of our already agreed upon averages. This upcoming year, we have some classes in grades one through three enrolled at twenty-six students. Prior to two thousand seventeen, our class size average at these grades was twenty. Although our fourth and fifth grade classes have come down in general, they consistently are above the class size average for the school year after year, even after these teachers have lost the prep period. It is our students who suffer who in the end get less time and attention with their teachers. At secondary, the student contact maximum is too high. Because of this, an individual teacher may have up to thirty-four students or more in each of their classes without necessarily being against the contract. Our proposal reduces this number, which in practice balances out classes. These proposals should be agreed upon as soon as possible so that we do not end up with the same situation that we had this year. In order to support the ever-increasing social and emotional needs of our students, we cannot have a hundred and seventy of them a day. We can't have twenty-six first graders. It is in the classroom on a day-to-day basis where students spend their time and it is here that we need to make some adjustments so that students can thrive. Our contract should reflect the intent of the BSET measure and now is the time to make that happen. I also would like to take this opportunity to invite our community to support certified and classified staff at site rallies on the morning of April twenty-first, which is a Thursday, before school at all of our sites. We look forward to partnering with you throughout our contract campaign and we would love to see you at this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Are there any other union comments from BCC EU but or Local Twenty-One? Seeing none, we will now move on to board member and superintendent comments. And I'm going to ask our student director, Ms. Mascherini Swann, to please begin our board comment period this evening.
Well, I actually don't really have any comments for this evening, but I appreciate that. I'm just excited to get into the discussion and I appreciate everyone who came out and spoke tonight as always, especially all the students. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you as well. I'm going to ask Director Vasudev if you would like to go next.
Yes, thank you, President Brown. Thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful comments tonight and thank you to President of BFT for your thoughtful comments on class size and reminding us the importance of our goals under the BSET measure. So we really appreciated those comments. I'm especially grateful to everyone who came out to speak in favor of Senate Bill fourteen seventy-nine, especially all our wonderful students. It's always great to see our students out at our board meetings. As a school board member who's also a public health professional, I look forward to our vote tonight with regards to our district sending a letter of support for SB fourteen seventy-nine, which is about COVID-nineteen testing in schools. This is one of the many bills that has been introduced by the Legislative Vaccine Work Group, which includes our local Assembly Member Buffy Wicks. Testing for COVID-nineteen has been and remains critical to keeping schools open. We were one of the first districts to offer regular screening last year and joined the state's rapid antigen testing program as soon as this opportunity became available to us. I want to thank our superintendent for his leadership in making sure that that happened. Although testing cadence and frequency may be reduced in the future, the pandemic's not over. And it's important to understand that in a time of a surge like we saw with Delta, like we saw with Omicron, we need to be prepared to keep students and educational workers safe. Without a doubt, the most successful districts that have navigated this pandemic are the ones that have robust COVID-nineteen mitigation measures. And it's not just Berkeley. Many low-income school districts such as Ravenswood City School District have been able to keep their schools open throughout the various surges because of their COVID-nineteen testing programs. And just as referenced, Ravenswood serves the East Palo Alto community and over ninety-two percent of their students are either foster youth, English language learners, or receive free and reduced lunch. Like Berkeley, Ravenswood has one of the highest testing consent rates in the state with over eighty percent of the children participating in a rapid antigen testing program similar to the one that we have set up. And between January and February, nearly thirty percent of the students in their district had COVID-nineteen. Had it not been for the financial support that districts like Ravenswood and like our district received through testing vendors with six staff, in the case of Ravenswood, their district nurse alone wouldn't have been able to provide testing and wouldn't have been able to have kept those vulnerable students in schools. So this decision that we're going to make tonight to support Senate Bill fourteen seventy-nine not only benefits our district. I want to be clear, it benefits many districts and many districts with vulnerable student populations like those districts in the Central Valley, like Ravenswood and many other districts throughout the state. Although we won't be discussing Senate Bill eight seventy-one tonight, I'd like to remind our community that SB eight seventy-one builds on Senate Bill two seventy-seven, another bill which BUSD supported in two thousand and fifteen that closed the personal belief exemption for vaccines. Several studies evaluated the impact of two thousand and fifteen's SB two seventy-seven, which eliminated the personal belief exemptions for vaccinations of schoolchildren and found that the stronger requirement led to a higher percentage of fully vaccinated kindergarteners. As an elected official, I'm going to continue to work with my fellow colleagues, fellow directors throughout the state and our local public health department to ensure that we're supporting our community with opportunities for vaccination and to work together to fight against vaccine misinformation, especially in communities of color. I look forward to our discussion tonight as well on our budget and many other exciting items, including our Director of Equity position. And thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Next, I'm going to go to Vice President Babett. Are you ready for your comments this evening?
Is that because I have my camera off?
Yes, that's exactly why.
Okay, President, sure, I am willing to go. So, good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone had an excellent spring break. I'm looking forward to the Black History Oratorical Fest, which will be on April twenty-eighth for our elementary school students and April twenty-first for middle and high school students. It's on Zoom starting at five PM for each competition, so please check the BUSD website for the link. This contest was started four years ago specifically to uplift Blackness to address root causes identified in the C-Says update, which we will be discussing this evening, which says, "Root Cause in Two Thousand and Twenty: Implicit and Explicit Bias: Cultural Dissidents and Low Expectations for Black African-American Students Leading to Negative Impacts on Academic Achievement." In two thousand and twenty-one, this root cause has been elevated to, "The overall educational community is unwilling to deeply examine its explicit and implicit biases and lacks the political will and focus to make sustained and evidence-based change to improve the outcomes for our Black African-American students." Board colleagues, current and future superintendent, cabinet, extended cabinet, district leaders, principals, and all. We have accountability work to do. Root causes: Lack of equitable and consistent implementation, inconsistent data collection and transparent reporting, and many more root causes supported by quantitative and qualitative data from every stakeholder in BUSD. When I read the feedback and looked at the data, I was reminded of the May sixth, two thousand and fourteen Parents of Children of African Descent press release when a person was quoted saying, "Our children are learning in burning houses. So we must work towards real systemic change and dispense with the window dressing." We have work to do. If you look at tonight's data, Kinder Dibels for Fall two thousand and twenty-one. Black students, seventy-seven percent below. Latinx, seventy-five percent below. Multi-ethnic, forty-eight percent below. White, fifty-six below. That's kindergarten. Third grade star reading, black, fifty-nine percent below. Latinx, thirty-eight percent below. Multi-ethnic, seventeen percent below. White, eleven percent below. Here, how the number drops from fifty-six percent for white students to eleven percent by third grade. Sixth grade star reading, black, sixty-seven percent below and further below. Latinx, forty-eight percent. Multi-ethnic, twenty-five percent. White, eight percent. The attendance gap does not explain this. Now let's go to high school and college. A through G eligible to apply to a four-year college, two thousand and twenty-one. Black students, seventy-six percent were not eligible to apply. Latinx students, fifty percent ineligible. Multi-ethnic, forty-two percent. White, twenty-six percent. This number literally doubles and triples the darker your skin color is. So let me be very clear. Mandating vaccinations is not my priority. An area in which we combined have no medical expertise in. And when it comes to funding, clearly, we need all the money we have, plus some, to compensate for our lack of improved first-level instruction. I am completely in awe of this district's complacency around such results, and it is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. Next, we'll go to Director Alper and then Director Si.
Same as our student director, I don't have any comments tonight, but wanted to thank everybody for coming out. So thank you.
Director Si.
I too wanted to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your opinions and your stories. And we take them very seriously and I appreciate the time people take. I too am very excited about the Black Oratorical Fest in the next couple of weeks and honored to be able to judge and look forward to hearing our young people who, you know, previous experiences have just been, you know, knocked your socks off. And that's it for my comments tonight. I'll comment on agenda items as they come up. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Before I turn it over to Superintendent Stevens, I wanted to, of course, thank Vice President Babett and for highlighting the Oratorical Fest as well as the data that describes where we currently are in our district and for the encouragement around accountability and for to encourage us as a district to move the needle more for our students and not be complacent with where we currently are. And I think that is, you know, a fire, a spark that will hopefully ignite a fire throughout all of us here in BUSD. As my colleague Director Si and I spoke, I'm also honored to serve as a judge for the Oratorical Festival and wanted to publicly thank you all for the consideration and for including all of us directors, as, or some of us directors rather, as judges for this Oratorical Fest. Greatly appreciated and gives us the opportunity to see students, which we don't get a chance to do often. So thank you for including us on that. I did want to make one comment this evening in regards to the agenda, just to clear what may be a little bit of confusion when we get to this agenda item. Tonight for the discussion item, which I think is item twelve, give me one second. It is item twelve. Point, excuse me, I'm sorry, item thirteen point two, thirteen point four, sorry, excuse me, thirteen point four. That will, that was, should have been agendized on consent. And so typically with action items, you'll see an entire presentation and then a discussion and then a vote. And you won't see that this evening. You will just see me as the president call for a motion for the board to approve this action item. And so I just wanted to make a note to the community that if you didn't see the typical discussion or presentation that happens around our action items, that is the reason why. Other than that, thank you all so much for coming here. Thank you for the public comments that were given this evening. And thank you for spending the time to stay here with us this late into the evening to share your feedback, your suggestions and your observations about what is taking place in our district. We take it, we do not take your comments for granted and really appreciate them. Next, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Stevens for his superintendent comments.
Thank you very much, President Brown, and thank you to all of our attendees this evening. We appreciate you being here with us. I want to begin by offering my thanks to the entire Berkeley community as we come back from spring break for your continued widespread participation in our at-home testing program. We were able to once again distribute about thirteen thousand test kits to all of our families prior to spring break. We had a remarkable number of families upload test results, seven thousand five hundred and eighty-one to be precise. We had twenty-three positive results back, a very, very low percentage given the overall number of tests. We want to once again thank our Berkeley families for your participation with us in keeping our community safe. We continue to partner with the city of Berkeley to offer youth vaccine opportunities. There are three taking place in this two-week period alone. We encourage you to check the city of Berkeley website and our Berkeley Unified website for those locations and opportunity times. And as well, just this week, we are partnered with the city of Berkeley to begin another round of youth vaccine campaign outreach. This is taking place in concert with the city and in particularly, we're looking to recruit unvaccinated young people to support a vaccine campaign at our school. So our thanks to the city of Berkeley for that ongoing partnership. I too want to call out the Black History Historical Festival that will be taking place over the next couple of weeks. And in particular, I want to thank a number of folks who have been behind the scenes to organize all of that work that includes a number of volunteer members of our Office of Family Engagement and Equity, as well as our African-American Success Project Manager, who have been working very closely with our Associate Superintendent to organize this year's historical festival. So, Oratorical Festival, excuse me. So thank you to all of you. I also want to acknowledge some hard work that's taken place at Berkeley High School over the course of several months. This coming week, April eighteenth through the twenty-second, we will see for the first time ever a Berkeley High School Unity Week. This is meant to be a replacement activity for sort of spirit activities that had become by all accounts sort of destructive and negative in nature. And so we're looking forward to the high school's efforts, which will include a spring carnival on that final Friday. And high school students can expect to see things like bubble tables, one-mile races, dunk tanks and karaoke booths across the course of the week. So this has been a real student-staff effort and I'm appreciative of everybody who has rethought this event in service of a positive school climate. I hope the community will look out for communication by the end of this week about the third phase of our student, family engagement related to the middle school student assignment process. And in particular, that you'll plan to join us for one of two town halls that will take place tentatively on May twenty-fifth. The first to take place in English and the second to take place in Spanish. More information to follow about those town hall opportunities. And then last, I want to celebrate that this month, for the first time in BUSD's history, we are acknowledging Arab American Heritage Month. I hope that members of our community caught a beautiful set of resources prepared by our staff that highlight both teaching and community resources related to Arab American Heritage Month. This has been a relatively new effort by our district to both symbolically acknowledge the full diversity of our community and as well to dig deep into our curriculum to make sure that we are both inclusive and celebratory in our look at all Americans as well. In May, we are planned to celebrate again Asian American Heritage Month and as well, we'll have, very happy to be sending out letter and resources related to Jewish American Heritage Month as well. And these are important efforts. Again, I want to emphasize that these are efforts that both symbolically uplift communities that make up our schools while we collectively as a community and as an organization think deeply about the impact of systemic oppression, white supremacy culture as it enacts itself, both in our classrooms, our policies, and sometimes in central and in central office practices. So with that, President Brown, I'd love to turn it back to you and I appreciate the opportunity to provide these updates.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Stevens. We will now move to our next agenda item, which will be to approve this consent calendar. Remember, we made some necessary adjustments earlier in the beginning of the meeting for the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Alper, seconded by Director Si. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role?
Yes, Student Director Mascherini Swann.
Yes.
Director Si.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. We will now move on to our discussion items, and for our first discussion item of the evening, we will have a review of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual financial audit. And so the district's annual independent audit for the fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one has been completed. And now we will receive a presentation for that review. And I'm excited to introduce Associate Assistant Superintendent Pauline Fallensby for this presentation. And now Izzy will also be a part of this presentation as well at this point in the course. So without further ado, Assistant Superintendent Fallensby, welcome.
Hello, everyone. We will be discussing the audit report for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one. And we have Charles Raibly, who is our external auditor, who will be filling us in, as well as Izzy Roter, who is on the audit committee. So I'm going to turn it over to Izzy. Izzy would need to be promoted as a panelist if he isn't already. So Izzy, I'm going to have you do your presentation and then Charles will follow up. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll sort of modify my presentation, probably shorten it a little tiny bit based on the fact that this is part of the discussion. But so my name's Isaiah Roter. I'm a longtime member of the Audit Committee. I think the Audit Committee is not a very well-known committee in the district. However, I believe we do serve a, an important function, which is to provide fiscal oversight to the financial affairs of the district. We consist of three community members, myself, Dan Lindheim, and Lori Snowden, as well as two members of the Board of Education, Vice President Laura Babbitt and Director Ty Alper. And one of our primary functions is to review and comment upon the annual financial audit for the district, which is why I'm here tonight. So we met, the Audit Committee met with the auditor, Mr. Roble and Mr. Jensen, and with Pauline Fallensby and with Liz Karam to review the twenty twenty-one audit. And I've sometimes been accused of stealing the auditor's thunder, so I'm going to try not to do that this time other than to say, we got a very good audit. The, the audit is an unmodified opinion, which doesn't sound like much, but is the highest level of audit assurance that the auditing profession provides. In years past, we've had no findings, which means that as part of the audit, the auditor did not discover any material weaknesses in the district's accounting practices. This year, the year under audit, last year, there was one finding. I'm not going to go into detail about it because I'm sure the auditor will. I'll just say that we think that this finding, although it's not minor, nonetheless, is a very technical finding. It has to do with the Self-Insurance Fund for the district, and we think is more in the nature of a sort of a a call, judgment call, rather than an error or oversight or anything like that. So the last thing I would like to say is I wanted to go over the good things that happened financially in the district. Since twenty twenty-one was such a difficult year, the year of the height of COVID, the distance learning, all work was done remotely. We received funding, large amounts of assistance for COVID relief from the federal government and the state of California. Those came over the course of the year from many different sources. Each of those sources had requirements for how the money was to be spent and also for for how it was to be accounted. And I can say that the auditor reviewed and audited each and every one of those sources and found complete compliance with every, every single item. That's a tremendous accomplishment in a very difficult year. And I for one, and the Audit Committee wants to present our and provide our gratitude to Assistant Superintendent Fallensby, to Liz Karam, and to the entire staff of the business office for their dedication and competence. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Roter's comments that, I guess, thunder, thunder stolen a little bit, but I, you know, I won't take offense. So as Ms. Fallensby mentioned, my name is Charles Raibly. I'm a senior manager with Crowe LLP. And so we were engaged to conduct the external financial and compliance audit, as was mentioned. It's an iterative process, so it's really building on our discussions with management. We have to understand the internal control structures that are in place. We have to understand different aspects outside of that that relate to the financial statements themselves. So what I mean by that is you've got kind of three major, major components of the audit that we conduct. You've got your financial statement audit, but you also, because you're a district here in the state of California, you have a state compliance audit as well, which was alluded to there. And then because you expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funding in a fiscal year, you were subject to a federal audit as well, or what we call a uniform guidance audit. And so those other components outside of the financial statement audit is really what a lot of the other testing gets captured into, in what Mr. Roter mentioned, with respect to those large support funding related to, you know, coronavirus and the impacts of that. In the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, I'll mention for the federal audit, we have two major programs that we audited, and the term major programs defined by the federal government. So it's those programs that haven't been audited for more than two years. It's also programs that have significant changes for the current year with the personnel. In this case, the Coronavirus Relief Fund or the CRF program fell into that category as well as the Education Stabilization Fund, or as you probably heard it referred to, the SER funding. So those dollars were significant in the total expenditures for the fiscal year. So those were two, two programs that we had to audit. The challenging part of that, which the district overcame that challenge, was that there were new requirements tied to those funding sources. So you had new things that had to be used, new things that were going to be used with those funds and new assessment that had to be done with the district's budget process to identify where those funds were going to be used. And that ultimately came to an unmodified opinion for those programs as well. So that was a good result. And as I mentioned, the state compliance, we had an unmodified opinion in there. And even with the financial statements, even in light of having a finding, we have given an unmodified opinion. And as was mentioned, that is the highest level of assurance you can, you're looking to achieve. It's also referred to as a clean opinion. The one finding that we did identify during the year with respect to the Self-Insurance Fund, we call that number, that total liability that's associated with the Self-Insurance Fund, that's called a claims reserve, and it's a significant estimate, meaning that there's a lot of subjectivity that goes into determining what that number is. There was a judgment call, if you will, on what that number should have been, and it was just significantly or a large dollar value different than what the actuarial studies have identified the liability should be. So that because that dollar amount needed to be adjusted, and it was a large dollar amount, we had an audit adjustment. And when we have an audit adjustment that's identified through the, through the audit, then we have a internal control finding. So we just, we're working with management to already improve and kind of update the internal control process so that that adjustment will recur internally and not as identified by the auditor. So I think we've already got a process in place to be able to ensure that won't occur again. And we're looking forward to the twenty twenty-two audit coming up. We're already ready to start twenty twenty-two fiscal year audit. And so we'll be looking through with the fiscal team to determine what that number will be at the twenty twenty-two fiscal year and ensure there won't be an audit adjustment, audit adjustment related to that. But I would summarize that we're really appreciative of management's efforts to pull everything together for us so that we can complete the audit and be able to issue these unmodified opinions with respect to the financial statements and the compliance. So overall, a positive result for this year's audit. A lot of other districts that we're auditing have had significant challenges and much longer conversations that we're having tonight. And so I think I want to just reiterate that that was a good result overall for the fiscal twenty twenty-one audit. Happy to entertain any questions if there are, and that's all I have to present this evening. So I see a hand raised.
Thank you. Thank you both, Izzy and Charles. Before we move to questions, Assistant Superintendent Fallensby, do you have any information that you would like to add?
I could discuss the, the judgment call in terms of Fund sixty-seven. It had to do with our liability for claims, and we relied on a report that we got from our, our insurance agency that manages the program that showed that we had significant improvements in the performance of our program. So claims were down and fifty percent. So we, we elected to keep the number that we had used the year before as opposed to adding an additional liability when we were getting reports saying that our claims were less than, were reduced by fifty percent. We had another actuarial report done, which, which we did not rely on because that was even a higher number. So what staff is working on now is a current actuarial report with all the information that's in place. So we can then make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to estimating what our liability is for our self-insurance fund. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that update and that addition to the conversation. We'll go to Director Alper.
Thanks, President Brown. I just wanted, as a member of the Audit Committee, I just wanted to thank Mr. Raibly and Mr. Roter for, for your service to the district and for conducting the independent audit and, and to say that we had a good discussion in the Audit Committee about, of, of the, about the whole audit, including the finding. And I just wanted to call out what, what both of you did call out, which was the, the clean bill, you know, with respect to the COVID funding, which was incredibly complicated funding streams. And as Mr. Raibly said, not something that every district was able to get right, and we are able to, which is a huge credit to our financial services staff and Assistant Superintendent Fallensby. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody appreciated the significance of, of that part of the report and to thank again the Audit, the rest of the Audit Committee for all their, their work in reviewing the audit.
Thank you. Director Alper, Director Sinai?
I just want to echo the appreciation to our finance associate, Assistant Superintendent Fallensby and your staff for all of the work that you did to make sure that we get a clean and positive audit. And thank the, the committee and, you know, Izzy and Dan. And I mean, you guys have been there for so many years. I think we count on you. And I, I want to make sure you understand that we do not take your time and your commitment for granted. Your experience and your dedication to making sure that our audits are effective and are, and that we follow up on what we need to follow up on is really welcome, well-received. And I just want to extend great appreciation to all of the committee and the work that you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I want to echo my board members by also offering my appreciation both to you, Izzy, and to all of those on the Audit Committee, including Director Alper, Vice President Babbitt, and also the staff who's also part of the committee as well, as well to you, Charles, for being here this evening. Thank you for your presentation and for the good news. It's not often that we have a lot of good news coming our way these days. So every chance we get some good news, I think it's important for us to pause, reflect on it and appreciate it as well. So thank you both for being here. We don't have any other questions for board directors, from board directors. So you all are excused for the evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next, we will move to item twelve point two, which will be the update on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget development. As many of you all know, we're in the midst of our budget cycle. And so in tonight's meeting, you'll see it provided an updated revenue as well as the expenditure projections for the Unrestricted General Fund, as well as other program, other programs. And so tonight's staff will, the board will receive a presentation as well as have discussion around it. So I'm going to welcome back for this presentation Assistant Superintendent Fallensby.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Brendan, do you want to say a few words before I share my screen or?
No, why, why don't you jump in and I may just sort of offer a few observations at the point in the presentation that's appropriate.
Okay, so I'm going to show my screen. Can I get permission to show my screen?
Ms. Fadios, can you please grant permission?
Thank you. So again, good evening, everyone. We're going to be giving you an update. And again, this is just an informational update on where we are in the budget cycle and some of the steps that we've taken in terms of finalizing the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So again, we're just asking for the board to receive updates and to provide feedback. The focus is on the Unrestricted General Fund or revenue or on spend balances. Feedback from a budget survey, which I'm going to ask Director Assistant Super, Aurelio to, to present. We have a lot of slides on district priorities that we've organized along the lines of the budget survey. And then we have an update on budget reductions. So with that, I will get started. This is the agenda. Looking at the governor's budget, which is included in the, in the second interim. And of course, we're waiting for the May revise to have updated information on our revenue assumptions. But right now, we're looking at the governor's budget and where we are big picture with expenses before budget priorities. Then we're starting to look at budget priorities, the feedback from the survey. And then we're looking at district budget priorities through these lenses. We have ten different areas that we're looking at, and we have several, several budget priorities in these areas, both funded by the Unrestricted General Fund and other funding sources. So we go into a bit of detail when it comes to our budget priorities. And we have a quick summary of budget reductions. These priorities are not possible unless we do budget reductions. And we're, of course, working with our budget partners to finalize our budget reductions, which we're bringing to the board for approval. I think it's in early June. So with that, I will let Superintendent Stevens.
Thank, thank you so much. I just wanted to offer a couple of notes before we jump into the content of the presentation. So it's important to note that right now in mid-April, we're roughly midway through the overall budgeting process. This year has been unusual. We began well before winter break, and now from January through June in the six-month stretch, we continue to sort of collect feedback, refine thinking. But we'd ask that, that folks keep in mind that this is really a report on progress to date. This can be viewed as a draft, and it's reflective of where we are now in terms of our engagement with the community, advisory committees, staff from the Board of Education. I do want to point out that there are a number of important lines of planning that are still underway at this point in time. To provide a couple of examples, the revision of the multilingual master plan is ongoing, as is the finalization of the African-American success framework. So some items that you'll see in tonight's presentations So some items that you'll see in tonight's presentations represent placeholder values that can and will be adjusted as we get towards the end of the year and have a clearer sense of implementation costs. Tonight's presentation represents components of a budget that are still changing. Or rather, that are changing. So we're not representing the entirety of BUSD's budget in this presentation, but only things that are either new or for which a funding source may be shifting. Do want to point out the collective bargaining has only recently started. And so it's still far too early for us to predict the overall impact of this process on the district's budget. It's a very important caveat to everything we're about to present. State revenues are still being calculated and adjustments to our allocations may take place prior to the end of the year. And then critically, final decisions are scheduled for May and June. So again, tonight is just a draft. By the end of May, that's our anticipated date by which we'll be asking for Board of Approval on a set of budget reductions that we'll present tonight. And as well, in June, that's the anticipated date of approval of any budget additions. So this is really just sort of a quick process check that we're midway through and we'd ask that folks keep that in mind as we proceed with this draft content. So back over to you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
Thank you very much. That's Dr. Stevens. So we said we would take a look at the, the overall change in, in our unrestricted general fund in terms of how much additional funding we're getting in our base funding. And this is just in our LCFF base funding. And this is just a change from one year to the other. So we're looking at, let me hide this. This is taking up a lot of my room here. So we're looking at increases in base funding and the focus is on 2022-23. So we're based on the current information from the governor's budget and the current assumptions that we're we're working with. We're getting $3 million more and that's with a COLA of 5.33%. We're looking at our ongoing increases. So we have our step-in column for both certificated and for classified. Our STARS increase, and this is already built into our multi-year projections. 1.1 million, PERS increase, 0.5 million. And so that's a total of increase of 2.5. So we really only have $500,000 left of the new increase and after new expenses. We're not anticipating an increase in special ed at this time. So that's giving us LCFF funding increase of $500,000 from our new funding that we're getting in. And that's just the, that's the number for 2022-23. And for 2023-24, it's a little, it's better, it's $1.7 million. But those numbers are before we take into account any new budget priorities that we're trying to fund and any new programs that we're trying to fund. So this is just a big, an overview that we have in our budget at a glance, if you will, in terms of new funding coming in and new expenses. So this is a slide that's looking at the new funding and this is on a restricted basis. Our LCAP funding, $370,000. We do have a new grant or expanded learning opportunity program. It's $1 million and it's ongoing, which is positive. And then, of course, we have our mental health partnership grant from the city of Berkeley. AG readiness grant, educator effectiveness. And we're not sure at this point if we're getting additional funds for COVID for 2022-23. But these, we're maximizing the use of these additional funding sources as we're looking at budget priorities, as you'll see on the upcoming slides. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Aurelio to take us through the budget priorities, the feedback from the survey.
Good evening, everyone. Associate Superintendent Aurelio here. And this slide represents a community budget survey that was put out prior to spring break. It was open, I want to say, for three to four weeks collecting responses. And in fact, I believe it is still open if people do want to provide, if the community still wants to respond. Essentially, we asked the community and staff, we went out to everyone to give us on these 12 budget priorities that are listed on the right-hand side from extremely important to not important rankings of five-scale ranking. And so what you're seeing here is the 12 listed with the highest priorities at the top, the lowest coming towards the bottom of this chart. The combined rate for the top two levels of ranking, the extremely important and very important. I also included the total number of responses on the left-hand side, including some of the demographic breakdown of those responses, just to give some context to this survey. You can see that the top four categories highlighted in green there are, are supports for struggling learners. With COVID, of course, our social emotional support supports have really increased, including mental health supports. There's always a need for early literacy and then compensation for employees. Those are the top four. And you can see that information right in front of you. I will turn it back to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
Okay, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio. So the next slide. This slide actually sets up our, the other slides that are coming up and we have we've been working with our committees and with working with staff in terms of looking at our priorities. But now we're looking at them through the various lenses. So there were 10 very, 10 buckets that we're kind of looking at. So the first one we're looking at is social emotional supports. So we've looked at a total amount budgeted and this slide actually ends, there are two slides for this section. So in terms of what we're thinking of, we're thinking of, and I don't know how much detail we want to go through, go into Brent. Just in terms of each of these line items. But we've listed here what we're thinking of for each, each of these categories. And the total cost and how much of that will be funded from the unrestricted general fund? And how much would be from other funding sources? So I could walk us through each line or we could just take a look at each section and then if there are questions, we can address questions afterwards. I'm not sure what you'd rather do.
Yeah, why don't we take it by section and then it's easy to circle back on particular lines?
Okay, so then, so priority, social emotional needs. We have four asks here. We're looking at funding a Vice President, a Vice Principal at Berkeley High, a Coordinator for School Based Services, Behavioral Health Services in terms of staffing, that will be $156,000 from, and these are the funding sources. And then a mental health coordinator. And then also we're looking at expanding our mental health support. And that's from the new City of Berkeley grant. And expanding mental health supports, this is from our COVID carryover that the board had identified. At some point, we still have that amount carried over. So for social emotional supports, we're looking at $1.4 million, of which 150 would come from the general fund and 1.3 million from other funding sources. The other category, we're looking at support for struggling learners. We can see where we're looking at summer school tier-three supports, that's going to be paid for by the ELO grant. The long fellows, seventh-period D, that was an ongoing cost that we realized we had omitted from our priorities. So we're, we're funding this for 2022-23 from our ELO grant. The bridge program, we're paying, it used to be paid for by LCAP, but now the general fund is picking up 30,000 and A to the, A to G grant is picking up 80. And our McKinnevento and our district math TSA, that's coming from our LCAP funding. Our literacy coach will be funded by LCAP. Our restorative, reset grant carryover, this was a grant that we had, the grant that we had allocated to sites in 2021-22. Any carryover can be spent in 2022-23. We estimate that to be $100,000 at this point. The summer programming and the destination college advisor position. That's $636,000, that's from our ELOP. And with our new CCAS grant, it's actually funding that set aside for our CCAS program. We plan to, to fund a coordinator position in Ed Services. And this is just a part of the CCAS plan, but we're putting it here just for staffing purposes. So the total that we're spending for support for struggling learners, 1.5 million, 30,000 from the unrestricted general fund and 1.5 million from other funding sources. So this is, we're actually looking at other programs, which is cost-neutral. And that has to do with our special ed IEs. And that is, that's in terms of increasing their FTE and also doing a home-based class for pre-K. But these are going to be funded using existing, existing funds. So early literacy support, and we don't have, this is going to be funded from, but early literacy supports, we're focusing on our LCAP to provide early literacy supports in the form of our literacy coach for reading recovery. A lead TSA district, district lead TSA or IT, IT RTI coach. That's from LCAP and the general fund will be picking up the literacy action plan, which is a part of the dyslexia settlement. And this is a cost that we're estimating for consultant and monitoring one time. So early literacy supports totaling 227 from the unrestricted general fund, 150, and from other funding sources, 77. The family support is another item that, that was on the survey that, that's an area of interest in the survey as well. So for PK, we're spending $40,000 and we're using our Title I and Title III funding for this and the general fund. So in terms of supports, Title, the Title I, II, I or III, we're picking up about 60, $75,000 for PK, the Latin family literacy. And the RT Fisher, the principal's learning circles section of our RT Fisher. And then our LCAP consultants support, the general fund is going to be paying for that. And these are the totals for this particular area. Do I have to say something? So for our English learner supports, we're looking at the EL master plan, implementing, implementing the EL master plan. We're using our educator effectiveness grant for that. Cabe, we are also, the last 20,000, we're using Title III. And then the K-12 implementation, we're using educator effectiveness. So all of that is from other funding sources. And of course, our affinity-based programs, our Black Studies Department, it's a departmental budget that's being funded by the unrestricted general fund. And Pointe and College Bound and incidental staffing to support engagement. That's all from our A to G funding. And our Young Gifted and Black program will be from our ELOP. Funding. RT Fisher, this is another component. This is the implementation of the African-American success framework and the parent advisory committee. We're estimating $150,000 to be paid from ELOP as well as STEM steps, another $150,000 to the ELOP. And these are estimates at this point. But we're, we're planning, we're identifying almost $600,000 for our affinity-based program, of which 30,000 would be from the unrestricted general fund and the rest would be from our other funding sources, other funding sources. And COVID, we're thinking if we don't get additional funding for COVID, we've identified $650,000 in expenses that if additional funding is not secured, we would either use carryover or our Fund 20, which is our amount that's set aside for our retirement program. But if that doesn't, if, if we don't get additional COVID funds, we'll be identify either carryover or Fund 20. And these are the areas that we have identified at a minimum that we think we may be needing for 2022-23, but we'd have to wait. We're in a wait-and-see mode for COVID. This area, you'll notice that in this area, the improved efficiencies or statutory increases, most of this is going to be funded by the unrestricted general fund, either in the current year or the subsequent year. So this has no other funding identified at this time. So we're using the general fund, some of which will be spent this year and some will be next year. So we talked about our workers' comp. It was a finding in our audit. We're taking a closer look at how we fund that program as well. So we don't want to have a negative fund balance. So we're thinking we would increase the rate since we're a self-insure and that would be, we're looking at $653,000 to be funded over two years. We're implementing, we're introducing a safety coordinator position. And that's to take care of not only the safety in, in our, in our, in our sites, but also our central office and district-wide in terms of safety from, you know, our safety plan for the, for district-wide and that person would be $150,000. That person would also assist with our COVID outreach as well. Inform K-12, this is software for our, our, our HR department. And expanding our Title IX support, 50,000, these are relatively small amounts. We had looked at increasing the cost of the meal reimbursement, but we're thinking we'll implement that in 23-24. And then in terms of this position in, in HR, for 22-23, we'll be using existing staffing and in 23-24 anticipate that we'll be adding additional staffing. The classification study, Charlie came to our S-Back meeting and explained, you know, went through a lot more detail in terms of what a classification study does. This is our estimate for over two years, partly to do the study and then the cost to implement it. We're looking at adding another payroll specialist in, for processing our payroll at the cost of $90,000. We're looking at a masters in governance for our and the board conferences. These are board exams. The last three have to do with our board in terms of having a new board and working on various programs for our board. So we're looking at a $1.4 million in improved efficiencies or statutory increases. Both will be from the general fund, 1.4 will be, that's a total, 799 would be in 22-23 and the rest would be in 23-24. Recruitment and retention, we're currently working with our bargaining groups to land at a point where we would the salary increases or other increases for compensation or other areas. So that's to be determined. And for recruitment and retention, we are looking at 69, I think that was a $69,000 and that's going to be paid for right there and
I wonder if I could just jump in briefly on this. I see that there's just a typo here. The $69,000 item should be for a teacher residence program.
That's what it is. I forgot. Thanks, Brent. Oh my God. So I know what to do. I copied the wrong, the wrong, so. Thanks, Brent. So with that, that's the details of what we're thinking of on our So with that, that's the details of what we're thinking of on our budget priority. And we're trying to be meaningful in terms of the areas that we're looking at. And I think by looking at these 10 categories, it demonstrates that we're not only looking at how the general fund can meet these needs, but also looking at alternative funding. And most of this alternative funding is ongoing, so it will not impact the program going forward. So, and I don't know why this is not following. So this is our budget, our budget reductions. And these are just some of the things we're looking at at this point. And I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, Brent, just in terms of going through this, but you can see we're thinking of saving, savings from the virtual academy. The additional funding for special ed, we think that should be used to read to instead of the general fund's contribution, so that will reduce our contribution to special ed. We're looking at additional enrollment projections on, in addition to what we already have in the budget. We're adjusting class size, that's looking at the impact on our teacher template and the impact on the general fund. We have looked at targeted reductions in operations and we're working with departments as we finalize those numbers. And we are thinking, looking at adjusting the special education service delivery in terms of our mental health assessments. And our educator effectiveness, we think that there's an additional savings that we had from our, from the educator effectiveness program. And then we're getting 50% of the summer school from tier three. We're going to be, we're going to be using the ELO grant for our summer school. So we can save some of the general fund there. And we had, we're thinking about the garden and cooking, reducing their materials budget. And also the teacher induction program from ed services, we think we can reduce that by 40,000. So this is, again, this is not finalized. We will have a final list, but this is just our thinking in terms of budget reductions and budget priorities. And I will take questions at this point. Oh, we forgot this one. Oh, I'm sorry. It should have been earlier. We have another priority. This is our equal literacy curriculum. I don't know why it ended up there. That's, we're going to be using the unrestricted general fund for our equal literacy program for 22, 23 as well.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Fonsby. Board members, at this time, we will open it up for discussions. If there are any questions or comments or simply any remarks in regards to this presentation, please raise your hand now so that you may be called upon. Director Alper.
Thanks. Should maybe, I don't know, unshare the screen, maybe.
Oh, you're not going to want to refer
Probably, you're right, probably will. I can, before I ask my question, President Brown, can I, can we just get clarification on what we're being asked to, to answer? I mean, I have a couple of questions, but I, but is there something in particular that, that?
Well, we aren't taking, we aren't taking any action on it tonight. I think that we're receiving this as information, updates and providing our feedback on.
Okay.
I can take us to the beginning of the
The first part.
Okay, but is, so, but am I right? Assistant Superintendent Fonsby and Dr. Stevens, that this is what, what Assistant Superintendent Fonsby just went through is kind of, for lack of a better word, the laundry list of possible things that we could fund. And that, because we're still at the mid-stage of the process, you all in consultation with our community stakeholders will be prioritizing and calling that list. And that this is an opportunity to, to provide some input into that process from the board at this point. Is that right?
Yes, that's, that's correct. But I might modify that just a little bit. So for any of the line items where we've identified both a cost and a revenue source, that reflects our current thinking, not only that we would fund it, but how we could fund it. So this sort of represents both the universe of possibilities and our efforts to fund those. So where we have placed a funding source, that means that we feel we can. Of course, we want board feedback to know that that is both the right item to fund, whether or not we're missing items that should be on this list. And then eventually we'll get to board decision in June on these items.
Well, but, but some of the items are just funded from the unrestricted general fund. So that may be where, where it would have to come out of. But whether we want to make that expenditure and, you know, is, is, it's just a question of trade-offs and we're not going to be able to do everything, right?
That, that is correct. Yeah.
So it's not, people shouldn't read there being a number in the column of funding from the unrestricted general fund is any kind of decision that anybody's made that that, that that item is going to be funded.
Yes, that's accurate. And as I sort of mentioned in my comments, the single biggest unknown right now is costs associated with collective bargaining. We simply don't know what those costs will bring for next year. And so all of this could be subject to some revision based on those costs.
Okay. I mean, the, the reason I emphasize that is that it's almost like the reverse problem that we sometimes have when we talk about budget cuts that we unnecessarily scare people into thinking that something's going to be cut when actually it doesn't end up being cut. This, this list, I think, could give people the, the wrong impression that we're going to be able to do all of these things when, when actually, you know, we may not be able to do very many of them or only some of them. The, I, I, so I just wanted, I had three, two quick observations and then a question. One is that in the, and I, this is a reiteration of a point I've made before that when we do the survey, I thought it was interesting, if you could just go to the survey, it was one of the first couple, I think it's one that Mr. Aurelio, it was, you know, the central office supports for hiring and payroll is always going to come in last place when we do a community vote. And, you know, this slide, I think, is such a great example of why we, why we need and want community input. Because we see for some of the things that are, that we see where, where the community prioritizes certain things. And I think that's really helpful and important and that we can't rely, you know, and nobody's suggesting that we would entirely on this kind of thing. Because we know that any supports for struggling learners, which came in sort of first place, can't happen unless we have, you know, people hire. And, and, and it can't happen if the people that we hire don't get paid on time or don't get paid correctly. So I just want to put in another plug for, you know, some of the things that came down to the, towards the end of your list, Assistant Superintendent Fonsby, that go to shoring up our HR department or payroll department. And I don't know enough to know what exactly we need there, but I know that that's an ongoing need that, that, you know, rarely gets, you know, prioritized. That's one observation. Second observation is the COVID funds, the $650,000 for COVID funds. I think it's smart and fine to kind of bookmark or, or hold in reserves funds for if we need testing in the fall. I would be really reluctant to start spending any of that money or actually hiring people that were locked into paying because it's not clear to me that we will need to continue testing in the fall. Maybe we will and, and certainly if the bill that we're, you know, being asked to support tonight passes and they're state funding, then that will relieve our obligation to do that. But so I, but I, but I, but, you know, we're, we've done the right thing. And I think Director Vasilevsky mentioned this, we've done the right thing. We've been a leader in this area and it costs a lot of money. And it, and it's not clear that we'll need to continue doing that in the fall. We may, but it's not, we don't know that for sure. That's my second observation. My question is, can someone explain the bridge funding to me? Because it's always really complicated. I, all I know is that last year, we allocated one-time funds to double one cohort that I think was this year's ninth grade bridge cohort to make it two cohorts. And how, and we, we, we voted to allocate the funds that would continue, would allow that cohort of double the size to continue through for four years. So I, I mean, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I feel confident that we voted to do that and that, and that the bridge program leaders can be confident that that funding is secure to continue that doubled cohort. It's just one cohort, but that's what we allocated the one-time money to do for four years. But Dr. Stevens or Assistant Superintendent Fonsby, can you just tell, help me understand? Is the rest of the bridge funding from year to year, the normal like baseline bridge funding that keeps the status quo? Is that secured? Like I, I, I know there's some confusion about that and I wonder if someone could clarify it. Thanks.
Pauline, do you want me to jump in on this? Yes, okay. And, and you, you helped me with this question as well. So, so the first question you're raising, Director Alper, has to do with that, that sort of bubble cohort that the board committed to last year. I believe this is true, that we have reflected the expense of that bubble cohort in sort of $100,000 decrease each year in our LCAP reserve. That's where that money is being withdrawn. So if one were to look at our multi-year projections, you'd see that the LCAP reserve is being drawn down over the next several years by $100,000 per year to support that expanded debt, that expanded bubble. And then we've also supplemented the bridge program with additional FTE. That's additional time for the coordinator as well as additional FTE for each of the bridge teachers. And that funding remains intact in this current draft of, of the budget.
Okay. So that's helpful. So right now, so the funding for that bubble is, is accounted for and secured. And then what you're proposing is just to continue with the status quo of the program.
That's correct. The sort of augmented version of the program that was expanded by the board last year. However, we have not made any plans for further increases past what we agreed to a year ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Follow up just on this bridge while we're here.
Sure, that's fine.
So when the seniors graduate, aren't they able to pick up a new ninth grade cohort from that seniors that graduated in bridge?
They could, Director Babett. I, I believe the board's decision was to provide funding for four years. And so I imagine probably that, you know, another decision would follow to extend that perhaps for another four years so that it's sort of another four-year, you know, sort of bubble could take place inside the bridge program.
Okay, thank you. So that would be in the, in like the base funding that we've already allocated.
That would, so the bubble is being funded through withdrawals from our LCAP reserve. And we've accounted for four years of those withdrawals. And I believe that the board's decision was that that would, those withdrawals, you know, four annual withdrawals from our LCAP reserve would take place for four years. And then in concept, if the board were to continue to draw down from that revenue source or any other, then, then we could go back and repeat the bubble for four more years, you know, meaning two, two cohorts for the freshman year, four years later.
So you're saying we won't have funding then for a ninth grade cohort next year?
We will, just not a, not a double cohort.
Not a double cohort, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if I was not answering your question.
Thank you. Director Vasilev.
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation, just with your thinking. And Director Alper stole a bunch of my questions. So like, you know, the COVID related the COVID related questions, for example, and I know we're going to vote on it later. But if we, if the state continues funding the federal epidemiology laboratory capacity funding that exists right now for districts, right? You could opt to take direct payment that would pay for some of these COVID related positions. That's what some districts are doing now throughout the state. And so, you know, if this passes, this legislation passes, that could be, I, I echo what my fellow director said, which is hold off hiring to see if that passes and to see if the state will provide the funding for districts to have that flexibility to make those staffing hires. And, you know, those are things that the district should continue throughout the state to advocate for because it does help, help relieve the staffing issue for us if the state can pay for it. And then the other question, I had a question about the expanded learning opportunity program out of the $1 million. How many of them in this presentation have been, you know, kind of broken down for different programs? Like how much is left in that pot of money, just high level? And then my other question is about just, you know, after-school programs, something that keeps coming up in different committees that I hear from DLAC in particular, is this need for tutoring, for after-school support? Especially like math intervention, right? So is there any thought right now of using any of those extended learning opportunity, you know, program dollars for tutoring, for additional STEM opportunities? Like I know that Willard presented at one of our recent board meetings and something that Ms. Lentz is doing, which I think is wonderful at Willard, is piloting an after-school STEM club because, you know, pass the wheel, when you're done with the wheel and you want to take the advanced STEM classes as electives, it competes with other electives at the middle school level. And so the classes tend to, you know, the higher level STEM classes tend to be less diverse, you know, by affinity group, by, by gender. And so Willard is piloting this after-school STEM program and what it would cost to offer that at all our middle schools. So I'm wondering if that's something that the expanded learning opportunity program could potentially fund as well as tutoring. And for some of the affinity-based programs, you know, for me, when I look at these survey results that are on the screen, you know, support for struggling learners, obviously our black and brown students are part of struggling learners. And so should those programs be, I, I feel like calling them affinity-based programs is not necessarily all true. I mean, they're, they're there because we want to close the opportunity gap for our black and brown students. And so should they be categorized as, you know, support for struggling learners as well as, you know, programs for, for our special education students? So I'm just kind of concerned about the labeling there. But overall, yeah, I just want to thank you for the presentation and see if, what kind of wiggle room with a, is there for after-school tutoring or after-school STEM in all the middle schools?
I appreciate these questions. Pauline, do you mind if I, I jump in and you can help me out?
Yeah, sure.
Great. So on, on the first question of state funding for testing, you're absolutely correct. We, at this point, don't know what will come from the federal or state government by way of COVID funding next year. We have tentatively earmarked some funds, should we need them for resources related to contact tracing and testing. It would be ideal if the state picks up those expenses. I imagine that we may get to a certain point in this academic year where we may need to make commitments to the staff we currently employ for these tasks for the, for the coming school year. If we decide to let those contracts expire, they may very well go off and find new work. And we could find ourselves starting from scratch in building our teams. So I think there's a dilemma of timing and it would be ideal if the state made its commitments prior to the end of the school year. So we have some sense of how to fund contracts moving into the next school year. In terms of the question about the extended learning opportunities program balance, in the budget that we presented here this evening, there's about $355,000 tentatively earmarked for programs that include young, gifted and black, continued work with the implementation of the African American success framework and STEM steps. That leaves about $550,000 that we've just put into the category of summer programming for 23. But that is a very rough sort of, sort of placeholder amount. And so there's still a fair amount of play inside, inside that yellow P grant for additional thinking related to student support. And then I do note your, your comment, Director Vasudev, about the labeling of programs and we'll give that some thought.
Wait, and just one quick follow-up question, Superintendent Stevens. For programs like STEM steps, right, can they be open to all struggling learners too? Or, and just, and if not, can we create programs like the ones at Willard that are open to all struggling learners for after-school STEM?
Yeah, yeah. By definition, all of our programs are open to all of our learners. And we do make targeted efforts to recruit in populations who we really seek to serve with these efforts. But by definition, all of our public school programs are open.
Director Sinai. So thank you both for a thorough presentation. I've got a couple of questions or comments, I'm not sure which. But I would like to echo Director Alper in the sense of the, the survey is really good to have. Just one of many tools that we use, especially when you look at the response rate. I mean, it was great to get 778 responses, but out of 10,000 students, it's a pretty small sample. And when you look at the demographics, it's also not representative. So good information, but not necessarily what should drive our decision-making. But inform it, you know, inform it. And so my question is, is, okay, let me make my other comment and then ask the question. So we had a presentation with the strategic plan around our goals and objectives for the short term. Looking at the LCAP data. Looking at the LCAP data around beginning to refine our our targets, you know, and then what are the strategies that are going to help us move the needle on the targets that we want to do? And so I'm just wondering, as we as as we go through this budget process, it's good to get the the qualitative feedback from families or the qualitative feedback from teachers and staff and administrators. But also using our data and our priorities, at least as they sit with the LCAP, around what of these strategies are going to have an impact? And I know I'm I I feel a little bit like I'm the broken record. Because every time we enter into the budget process, I'm always asking, but how are we knowing that some of these things that we're going to continue to fund are actually having the desired impact that we want to have? So I don't know with our Brea work if as we go down the path in the next month, if there will be some crosswalk between our strategies and what we hope to achieve, knowing that not all the data, you know, moves in a year. But how how it connects, you know, how it how it connects to the goals that we've got. And then I think my so that's just a comment in the sense of framework, because it it we have these different parallel processes going on and we're not crosswalking them. And so my question is, I I'm trying to get a handle on kind of like, I know that Sback has been meeting and I know that PAC and DLAC have been meeting. Have they informed part of this process, like the questions around the dollars and where they're coming from? Or are you kind of getting a finger on the pulse of the board so that you can go back and present to the committees? Because I don't feel like I know. I mean, I missed the last PAC meeting, which I apologize, but I don't feel like I know what they're usually we have something that says, this is what Sback has been saying, this is what PAC has been saying, this is what DLAC has been saying. And we're, you know, in mid April now. So I'm just wondering where that process, where where it connects.
Sorry, I was unmeeting myself. So so these are great comments. We really appreciate them. So so we are we are using our data to be to drive some of these program decisions. We're of course really eager to build out our data dashboard. I think we're all very interested in being able to plug program participation data next to outcome data and get to the point where we can really look at the outcomes by program. We're not there yet as a district. We don't have that sort of repository of program participation data to know sort of if X, you know, sort of leads to Y. But we are working hard on that. In fact, we presented that sort of draft data dashboard, I think, just a single meeting ago. And that tool is eventually will get us there. So broadly, we're using what we know about trends in our data to put money down on targeted strategies. So we know broadly which populations of student needs additional support. We're working with RT Fisher to engage our community very deeply and do a deep dive into research to build out an African American success framework, for example, or to revise our Yale master plan based on current research, which gives us a good sense of where we should put our money. But it's not yet driven, I think, to the extent you'd like and we'd all like by that sort of program outcome data. In terms of committee participation, what the board is seeing this evening is identical to the presentation to the Sback just yesterday. And so we've been keeping both the board and the Sbacks are very closely sort of aligned in terms of the content. And then PAC is also had opportunities to weigh in on its not on this full sort of presentation, but has had opportunities to weigh in on supplemental funded programs and DLAC, of course, has been advocating for programs specific to English learners. And so you'll see those priorities represented in tonight's presentation.
Student Director Mosca Vinyasam?
Um, yeah, well, I'd just like to echo what all of my directors have said, and thank you guys for preparing this presentation. And especially what Director Alper and Sinai remarked on about the survey. I think it's just really important to note that this survey is very or not really representative of our population as like a whole. If 73% of our responders were white versus the demographics of our actual district, I think it's just really important to note that this is primarily, this is primarily the priorities of our white parents, not our parents as a whole. And and I also, I mean, this is a more organizational thing, but I think that I would be interested in seeing a breakdown of what kind of funding is going into support for students running sexual harm in terms of funding going into the Title IX offices as well as funding for independent contractors. I know we have the funding for Megan Farrell. But I think also funding going into consent education in classes and assemblies for contractors would also be useful, especially as we look at prioritizing making sure we're maintaining hires from year to year for those positions. And also, oh, yeah, and also I just want to echo Director Alper's remarks about the importance of staff retention and putting funding into our HR, because I think we all really saw the implications of not having the hiring processes that needed to happen at the beginning of the year and the lack of staff and BUSD and subbing shortages and all that, and how much of a drain that added on our district throughout the year with COVID. And I think that just really emphasized the importance of good hiring practices and putting money into staff retention throughout the year. And I think we're going to continue to see those impacts at the end of this year with what teachers are coming back and what staff are continuing to stay there. Oh, and I also I'm wondering, um, so I see that special education is one of the top priorities in the survey, which obviously isn't representative of what we as a district are necessarily need to prioritize. But that's what the a lot of the budget reductions seem to be taking the form of reductions to special education. And I'm just wondering the reasoning for that.
Thanks so much for these questions. I'll I'll jump in on these and sort of look for help from my colleagues as well. What you're seeing in this presentation isn't necessarily representative of all of our budgets. We we so to go directly to your question about resources related to mitigating sexual harm on our campuses in our community. The only item that's showing up this evening in the presentation is a supplemental sort of allocation for ongoing support for Megan Farrell, who's a Title IX attorney who supports us and has presented several times to the board this year. But we do, however, have other resources embedded in our BSET budget. Those are ongoing resources for consent education in the district, and that is BSET resources, in fact, that are paying for work at the high school, both last semester and this semester. And then we've also got resources embedded in other locations for ongoing support for green that, for example. And we will intend to continue funding for coaching boys and men, although we've got to find that the staff member to lead that program after we lost somebody mid-year.
And the Title IX offices?
And the Title IX offices remain fully intact. So they're fully funded for in our thinking for 2223 in the same way that they are for the current school year. And that's full time. That's three full time employees. And then to pick up your question noted about the the sort of importance of HR support. And then just to note on special education, so in the list of potential reductions, we note that we feel we can save about $270,000. But this is simply a shift in services, not a reduction in services. What we're intending to do with that particular line is to hire our own school psychologists to conduct our own assessments as opposed to contracting out with the county for those assessments. We're paying top dollar through the county. We feel if we can hire the school psychologists, we can go do a better job and do it more cheaply. So same service level, just efficiency that we would gain by hiring our own folks.
And the reduction contribution to sped at the top?
Yeah, that that actually is a representative of incoming a new allocation for special education from the state. So we would intend to reduce our general fund allocation to special education services and use this new state money to backfill for that same service level. So again, no reduction, simply a shift in funding source.
I see. Thank you.
Vice President Babett?
Thank you so much, and thanks for all of the thoughtfulness in this presentation and for really putting some good thought into holding places for many of our programs and things that we want to continue. It is greatly appreciated and noted. I want to ask about accountability in regards to a lot of these new positions that are being proposed. And how are we going to build an infrastructure where we can kind of piggybacking on what Director Sinai says, actually hold our internal staff accountable for their responsiveness of their work? For example, you know, we are talking so much about college bound and bridge program, but yet I'm still trying to figure out why we aren't pressing our counselors to do more of this A through G work and to do more of this outreach. I understand from past years that, you know, in Berkeley Unified, we actually have more counselors than other school districts have based on our students. But yet we still have to do so much supplementing. And so when I talk about accountability structures, that's really what I'm talking about. How are we going to? Yes, supplement, but not supplement to the point because we're not getting what we need to get out of the staff that also get benefits from BUSD, right? Get their retirement from BUSD. So when I look at a position like a BHS vice principal, climate and wellness, that sounds really great, but climate and wellness is also everybody's job. So how is this person going to be more accountable than everybody who's not necessarily living up to the climate and wellness, I guess, since we need this position, right? This is this is my struggle with adding new positions without making sure that we don't have an infrastructure in place from the people we're already paying to do that part of their job, to do that part of what really is in all vice principals roles. So that's one comment. And then definitely appreciate Director Vasudev bringing up the tutoring and the extended learning opportunities and all of my colleagues were talking about how our HR support needs, HR needs to fill these positions, right? However, all of this works with our personnel commission. We need to fill these positions because we're constantly outsourcing to Sports for Learning to help us with our extended learning. So my question is, if Sports for Learning can find people to work in our after school programs, why can't BUSD find these same people to work in our after school programs? This is clearly has been a foundational struggle our extended learning opportunities in general with BUSD since the last task force. And we've seen no results come from those from that task force initiative on how we're going to improve our after school programs. We got to do that level of work if we're going to change that data. We cannot just simply say, oh, let's get a coordinator. Oh, let's get, no, let's figure out how we staff our programs, train our own people and develop them so that we have an equitable extended learning program. So we don't have the haves and the have nots in public schools, because that's literally what we have in BUSD. If you can afford the extracurriculars in our after school programs, you can get that. If you can't, you get to sit over here and get babysat. That is not acceptable. And that is what we have to do some detailed work to change. We have to do some roll your sleeves up and figure out what is the problem, because I don't want to invest in Sports for Learning. I want to invest in BUSD staff who I can train, who I can develop, hold accountable for for actually adding to the success of our students. Lastly, with the 500K reserve for emotional wellness, emotional health support, the the city of Berkeley has given us this this new money, right? This new grant. And so I'm just wondering, do we really need to hold that? Since we've gotten, I think it's 1.2 million or something from the city of Berkeley, well, from the efforts that they did to get a grant for that kind of work. So I would just like for us to be thoughtful about holding those funds when we could actually be using now's funds to improve something if we have another source. You guys have been really great about, oh, we got this source. Let's use this source. Let's use it. I appreciate all of it. And I haven't seen much coming from the LCAP plan, which is great, because we know that those are supposed to be for expanding the the opportunities of that population. So again, with the emotional wellness and support, I'd like for us to to think the same way. Thank you.
Superintendent Stevens or Assistant Assistant Superintendent Collinsby? Would you like to respond?
Yeah, I I'll jump in. I appreciate all of these comments. I know that you've made some comments about a number of programs and we'll go back and go do some thinking and we'd welcome the opportunity to sort of come back and talk more deeply about those programs. And then I do note that you made some comments about several of the revenue sources, including the the current $500,000 in COVID balance that we have that we didn't intend to deploy towards mental health supports that maybe could be deployed somewhere else. And then your your points about sports for learning, of course, noted, we feel exactly the same way that we want to be filling those positions with employees and not contractors, and we're working hard to do that. So we appreciate all those comments. We're going to give them some thought as we continue this process.
Director Sinai, before we jump to you for the second round, I did want to ask a follow up question to the mental health supports. So last year during COVID or the the time during COVID, we were able to make those allocations. I did, I I know that we allocated $500,000, but I am unsure of the programs or what has been done for the district around mental health, especially because we're seeing it again. And I know it's itemized just as mental health support services. But, you know, just on the heels of what Director Babett shared and also out of curiosity, can can you all paint a picture for us around that those funds?
Can I jump in? Dr. Sims, I'll just give some history. So that $500,000 was earmarked by the board to be spent on mental health services from our COVID funds. So we provided mental health from other funding sources and we have not touched that $500,000. We kind of put a placeholder in our COVID funds to be spent on mental health. So what we're doing now is just bringing it back in the budget to see this is an available source that was earmarked by the board for mental health services, and we have not yet identified what those services are going to be. Well, we know it's earmarked for mental health based on the board's board's instruction.
I think my my follow up question to that Assistant Superintendent Collinsby is, do we foresee? I remember the day that a board made that that recommendation, but do we foresee still needing it to to be there or to be offered for mental health services? Presently, I know that it is listed, but is there a plan for the use of those funds, especially if we're looking at cuts down the line that represent $500,000?
I don't think we have specific needs identified as yet. But I think just into, I mean, if we if we if the board is giving us permission to use it on any other programs we can, but I I thought we had to use it the way it was previously identified. But if the need is no longer there, we can certainly use it for something else.
If I can, I'll jump in. So one of the so the the grant, the new mental health support grant that we received, this was a grant that was co-authored by the district and the city. We had a joint writing team of both district personnel and city personnel and submitted that grant jointly. We both won that grant out those grant that grant award jointly. And that's roughly $2.6 million over four years, about $650,000 per year to support mental health services. We did make one commitment as part of the grant application, and that's to hire a mental health coordinator in part to coordinate services between the city and the district and as well to coordinate services inside of the district. We also made another commitment as part of getting that grant award that we would convene an advisory group to do more thorough investigation of mental health needs and gaps in services. And that is intended to start now that we know that we've got the grant award. So in direct response to your question, President So um in direct response to your question, President Brown, is that we now have a, a process that we're expected to follow to sort of identify gaps in mental health services. Uh and I hope that we'll be able to answer that question far more comprehensively after we've gone through this process with city and district staff.
That, that's helpful to know. Thank you. Um and then I just wanted to ask really quickly about the $250,000 allocation for PPE cost. Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby, is that taken um just based off of what we allocated uh last year? And do we still consider that to be um a cost moving forward, given all of the um county and state changes? And is the need for PPE still at $250,000?
So that you were asking about the $250,000 for COVID, is that what you're asking about, President Brown?
Um I believe on the budget priority COVID page, um there's a line item for PPE cost.
Right. So this is just our estimate at this point. We have no idea um in terms of what's going to be needed next year. And it's a placeholder. Um we do have some PPE, but we have no, this is just an estimate at this point.
Okay, thank you. I, I think my specific question was around the estimate based off of last year's. Projections around what we would need, or has that estimate been updated based on where we are currently with COVID? I think is my question.
The, this estimate, it's really, um, it's really. Th- this is our best thinking in terms of what we think we're going to spend. And we do have some reserves that we're bringing over. So again, it's, it is a placeholder. You know, if there's a better estimate, we can, we can update that amount.
Okay, thank you. Um besides Director Cyanine, do you mind if I ask my last question? Okay. And then my other uh question was around the uh tip produc- tip reductions. Uh the reductions to, to tip, to the teacher induction program.
Oh, okay. That was on the savings page. I may have um Assistant Superintendent. Um, is Sam, can you speak to that? Or Brent, if you can speak to that?
Sam or Brent, if you could speak to the reductions to tip.
Uh I think I can, and I, I think this is uh just simply a funding swap. Um I don't recall that we've had any internal conversations about reducing um that, the tip that, that teacher edu- that teacher. PD program. Um Samantha, I'm not sure if you can help me out on this one, otherwise we might have to go back and do a little study on that one.
Yeah, we can go back and look, but I'm not aware of any um reduction. I think it's a change in funding.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see it listed as such on the presentation, so.
Um it, uh, I do know that when we got the Barra um. 5% for retention and recruitment that we moved that program into Barra. So it may be that, that um we still had a placeholder elsewhere and we're um getting rid of that placeholder.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. Uh Director Cyanine?
Thanks. Um great question, President Brown. Um I wanted to just comment on the mental health supports for a moment. Because it's, um, it's a little bit frustrating that we haven't spent the $500,000 that we set aside. For uh mental health services. Um and it seems to me like it's really a capacity question. Is the needs are there. Um and I think one of the things that I've talked to Dr. Stevens about also is. Having some discussion and presentation with what does mental health supports mean? It doesn't just mean one-on-one therapy, which is, tends to be what we do. We have a lot of community-based agencies that are doing therapy and we did talk, and I think some of this is happening. Where some of our community partners that are providing mental health services, we wanted them to also do some behavioral health supports in the classroom. Some supports for the teachers um that coming um not off the pandemic, but transitioning. Within the pandemic is that um there was, there is and continues to be a lot of trauma throughout our families. And it manifests in the classroom, it manifests on the playground, it manifests within our communities. And so if we're able to hire a mental health coordinator, you know, again, having some. Um clarity about what that role is responsible for. And looking at really providing some trauma-informed care in our district, in our classrooms. And with our teachers so that we're not only providing direct service to our students, but we're also building the capacity. Among the adults to be able to work with our students who might be struggling um with behavioral health issues. So I, I really don't want to let that go. Um I think we haven't spent it because we haven't had the capacity to actually plan for it. Um so I'm, I just want to flag that, um because I think there's still, and, and it's great, we can do an advisory group. And actually get some real um concrete qualitative and quantitative data about what the needs are. But um every report you hear is that our students and our adults are still suffering. A lot of trauma from the pandemic. It's, it's not over, it continues to, especially um some of our more, you know, um folks who have. Um challenging circumstances. So the question that I want to, well, uh two questions. One is um. I definitely am going to want to hear more about this VP at Berkeley High. Um and what the, what, what that role would actually be and um. Why is it needed and what is it, you know, what is it going to do that's, that's different? You know, so I echo Director Vice President Babett's um comments around that. Um so Dr. Stevens, I just wanted to get a little bit, and this kind of goes off of the question that um Student Director Muscatana Swan was asking is. Are we seeing in this budget kind of a snapshot of some of the one-time-only expenses? That we approved last year that you're trying to figure out with us and the committees? What's going to get continued or what might have to get dropped? And the other budgets, like where the sexual um uh harassment stuff is coming in or the consent education. Or some of the stuff that's in LCAP or D-LAC around tutoring that might be getting pulled out of other budgets. We're getting, we're getting one slice of some of the budget here, right? And maybe you could talk to us about where we're going to see. A more comprehensive. I mean, not the full-blown typical budget, but kind of what we've done with the spreadsheets where. What programs are coming out of what funding sources that aren't just the one-time-only, but that have been embedded in BSEP. Or LCAP or whatever, because I just realized when Student Director Muscatana Swan was talking. That we aren't seeing it all right now. There's a bunch of stuff that is getting funded elsewhere. Could you talk a little bit about that process?
I can, yes. Um so I'm, I might back up um just to sort of uh respond very quickly to a couple of your comments. I, I appreciated your comment about the, the sort of potential of this advisory group on mental health. Um and giving that group a little bit of time. It's not yet formed. This is, you know, a recently received grant. So we're now going to take the next steps with the city to form that group. But it is a great opportunity for us to do this sort of more comprehensive inventory, uh to define what a coordinator might look like and to coordinate better across both. Private providers and the city. Um the Vice Principal uh at Berkeley High School, this is a brand-new idea. Uh I've been speaking uh often with Principal Regosa about climate issues at the high school this year. Um it's been relatively well-known fact in our community that it's been a bumpy year at the high school. Uh and so I've invited him along with his administrators and teacher leaders to begin thinking about what it would look like to invest in climate and wellness at the high school. Uh and this is actually just one idea in a set of ideas that is being generated at the high school right now in keeping with that sort of planning conversation that I've asked for. Um I'll provide more information as the high school team generates it uh specifically about that role. But it felt appropriate to me to introduce the idea in this budget concept, or in this budget presentation as a concept potentially that can be elaborated and potentially funded. Um and then directly to your question about these other budgets, um the answer is yes. Uh we have multiple other budgets that are not being presented tonight. Um they include the supplemental budget, what we call the LCAP budget, um and it also includes all $32 million of BSEP. Uh not being presented tonight. Um the BSEP PNO, just like last night, actually heard the first four of its budget plans for 2023. Uh and so it will be the case that BSEP budgets will begin to come to the board very shortly uh for review and approval. And it's in the context of those budgets that you'll begin to see items like consent education. Uh there are a number of other important district priorities embedded in, in BSEP as well. Um we can attempt sort of a collated representation of those programs. Uh it may be worthwhile having some more conversation with board members about how to present that collated list. It would be a massive, massive list to attempt to, to represent all of our investments across every funding source. Uh but we may be able to sort of do a collated list in keeping with particular priorities.
Thank you. Uh and Vice President Babett and then Student Director Muscatana Swan will be our last.
Just speak to what Dr. Stevens said really quickly. I was just going to say, I think that it might be useful. I mean, I know that a lot of the breakdown for what we just saw was kind of regarding what we're seeing as strong priorities from our community. And so I think maybe that could be a useful way to prioritize the um line items that we're funding through other measures as well. I totally understand that, like, viewing every single thing probably isn't possible, but I think that looking at what our communities and what we as a district are wanting to prioritize. Um and examining that in the context of the different areas of funding would be a useful way of breaking that down.
That's super thoughtful and we could, well, why don't we give a little thought to how we could use these categories as ways to represent um the multiple funding sources?
And finally, Vice President Babett will be our last uh speaker on this item.
Great. I just wanted to um echo, which I don't do often, but I wanted to make sure it was heard what Director Alper said around. Uh making sure we don't start to re-spend at last year's COVID levels when we really don't know yet. What our COVID needs will actually be. Um as far as hiring personnel and doing all that staffing and being like super beefed up, I, I would hope that we could um. Save some funding, but you know, we have 650,000 here and just really be more realistic around. Uh the fact that we do have a, a very well-vaccinated population and all the things that we are doing are actually proving to help and to slow the spread. So thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions from um our board directors, thank you Assistant Superintendent. Uh Fallinsby for your presentation at this evening. And uh thank you Assistant Stevens, uh our assistants and Associate Superintendents for also joining the conversation. And I, I'm going to, if it is okay with you all, make a bit of a shift to uh the agenda. It's not a change because it's already been approved. However, we do have staff here who are here for the CCAS presentation. And the hour is getting a bit late, and I'm wondering if we could invite um Staff Associate Superintendent. Uh who are here for the CCAS presentation to join us at this time. Uh and then after that, we'll go to the Director of Equity, Action item, if that's okay with you all. Uh Board Directors, it's just a thumbs up if you're fine with that. Thank you, perfect. Uh Ms. Barrios, as you are promoting them, please, I'll just um give a little bit of information. So um some of you may know, BUSD has been identified by the State, California State Department of Education among. Um 140 other districts of having a significant overrepresentation of certain culturally ethnic and racial groups in special education. Um or other disciplinary systems for the two, 2021 school year. Um and so tonight uh we will receive um a CCAS presentation that focuses on the purpose of CCAS. Which is to uh improve academic outcomes for the, for the identified groups that I mentioned. Um in general education and to hopefully decrease the over representation um of those identified groups instead. So for tonight, the board will see um a presentation on the CCAS plan and will also take action. Uh will give feedback, of course, um and also take action um on the receiving of that plan. So without further ado, I'm going to invite Associate Superintendent Fallinsby and, oh, sorry. But Associate Superintendent Aurelio for this presentation along with staff.
Thank you, President Brown. I was so excited. I was ready to hand off to Pauline. So thank you. We have a presentation for you all uh with an action item. We are going to be asking the board to take action and accepting and approving the 2021. Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services Plan. This is one of two plans. We are currently in the middle of the 2020 CCAS plan. This is the 21 CCAS plan, and just for future reference, we will be coming back to you. Probably in November with the 2022 CCAS plan. Um so you're going to get very familiar with these types of plans as we move along. Um this evening with me, joining me is uh team members, Sean Mansinger, Executive Director of Special Education. Uh Debbie Dean, our Director of Schools for KDA, TKDA. Our uh Dr. Philip Scheller, Director of Student Services, and Ruth Steele-Brown, our Director of Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment. And they're going to be uh co-presenting. So just, and thank you for the introduction, President Brown. I think you spoke to a lot of these different items. But just as a quick overview of what CCAS is, the, the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention. Services Program, our district was identified for over-representation of African-American students in three categories. Um of qualifications for special education, and those were specific learning disability, other health impairment and intellectual disability. Because we have over-representation of the African-American student group in those categories. Um for over three years consecutively, we have to now allocate a portion of our budget from special education. To address general education students um prior to needing special education. So we're really truly trying to do early intervention. And so we went through a process and our, the team will be speaking about that process. Where we looked at deep dives at root causes, why are we over identifying students? Really looking at our practices, how are we going to address this? And that, that's what we will be representing in this plan. So just a bit of background, I mentioned the 2020 plan. Um you can see in the green box here. For the 2020 plan, we had four identified areas, all for African-American students. We also included overall that category is no longer included in the 2021 plan. Um but you can see that going back to year 2011, we used to be over-identified for emotional disturbance. That is no longer the case, uh but we still have three areas where we're over-qualifying African-American students. And those are represented in that blue box for 2021. So we want to turn it over. Oh, thank you, Sean. Jump in.
Uh we want to uh just highlight um the process that we went through. Um it's a very thorough process, process. It's probably, out of all the plans I've worked in, on, it probably is one of the most. Um a, a process that we really have to delve deeply in and engage multiple stakeholders. Um I wanted to note that you can click on this if you want to learn more about this process. It's got the State Performance Plan Technical Assistant Project. So essentially through this entire process, we need to make sure that we're incorporating a cultural lens. That we're always considering our, um the families and the different backgrounds they come from. And then looking at our own cultural lens as we interact with others' cultural lenses. Um so phase one is just getting started. It's getting, gathering data, it's getting our stakeholder groups that we, um educational partners, we're calling them now. Um together. Um and then phase two is where we really start doing a lot of interviews with different stakeholder groups, educational partners, excuse me. Um and then really identifying the root causes. And then from those root causes, we start developing our activities, which we'll be presenting in a little while. And then um when we reach phase four, that's when, and the CDE Board approves and the CD, California Department of Education approves. Then we move into actually uh implementing the plan and doing quarterly reports. Um and checking in with our community partners and, and um letting them know the progress we're making and collecting feedback from them. Uh this is just, uh we want to highlight the number of groups that we engaged with. Um in order to come to the root causes and to develop our activities. So for 2020, um we engaged with these different groups. We decided for the 2021 plan, we wanted to um do some further, uh a deeper dive into um some of our root causes. And um and then we had education partners meeting on March 3rd and March 17th where we revealed our root causes, got feedback from our. And and then we had education partners meeting on March third to March seventeen where we revealed our root causes, got feedback from our community. Our educational partners and then came back again to reveal our activities to get further feedback.
We then worked with our schools that are our C say schools to create individual learning plans for our students who we identified. In these individual learning plans, teachers took special note of the students, made them focal students. And really focused on the teaching and learning so that there could be improved outcomes.
Right. And just to note, these are two thousand twenty activities that we're reviewing now. And then afterwards, we'll be going over our new activities for our two thousand twenty one plan. We also did something called Ed three walks. So we realized that we really wanted to get more of an on the ground. Lens of what's going on at schools. And so what we did is we contracted with Dr. Mary Bacon and what she does is she takes. She, the principal works with the principal to identify a small group of students. And those students actually walk around the school and give a tour and give different, they talk about their experiences. They talk about things they like about their school, things like they see changed. And we use this qualitative data to further develop our activities and think about the changes that we need to make for for our students.
And then another one of the C states activities is the creation of the discipline matrix by the discipline metrics task force. Which I will actually refer to this now as the positive behavior matrix. And which is being developed for all the schools within the Berkeley Unified School District. As we establish a uniform discipline code for the district. Additionally, the matrix outlines alternative means of correction, interventions that school sites may use. And other consequences that may be issued. Essentially, we understand that interventions and consequences are most effective. With students when they deal directly with problems fairly and partially equitably and are culturally responsive. So therefore, the positive behavior matrix is going to provide schools with supportive responses to behavior practices. Next slide, please.
I think this is Ruth.
Sorry, I couldn't see the notes. I couldn't remember.
No worries. You're just talking about the the data collection portion.
Yeah, no, that's good. So we've, there's actually, and I am I doing that little slide deck later, Ruben, with the progress data?
Yeah, but if you just want to briefly talk about the.
Yeah. So one of the things that's been a challenge is I've spoken to before is is collecting consistent and accurate data. And the nice thing about what we're able to do right now with the C says plan is look at data from the fall and compare it to data from now. So we've been looking at student attendance, behavior, whether any of our vision scholars are being newly qualified for special ed, which has not been happening. So that's good. That's one of the goals is to ensure that more kids are not being referred to special education. So that's promising and encouraging. And then we've got academic data to share in terms of progress that we'll look at later. I I don't know that I'm speaking to recruitment and retention.
No, no, I got that one. Thank you, Ruth. And just just and just to share, we're not going to go through all forty eight slides. This evening with you all, we've included essentially a large appendix of data related to the data we. Used in coming up with the root causes and working with different educational partners. And Ruth added, and I'm not sure, Board Directors, if you were to download now the deck, it's an updated deck. We've included some current data that represents fall to winter for our vision scholars this year, which was missing in the original upload. So we do have some updated data that you can reference and look at. Just briefly, we did. Through the Barra, we are looking at recruiting teachers of color and you can we have allocated dollars to that process. There's something that is ongoing and something we believe strongly in in the district and that is being promoted and we've had it listed here as part of the twenty twenty. Activities. Sean, I believe you were talking about the assessment process.
Yes, so this was a, what we did is we got a group of our own psychologists. We actually worked with Alameda Unified as well. Because they're also in C says for similar areas. And what we wanted to do is we want to look at our psychoeducational template. And we wanted to add more of a cultural lens to it. So we worked with a contractor and we broke down, looked at it closer. We really wanted to focus on. The impact of culture, thinking about family stressors that we'd be going through and and really. Get better at our interview process and make sure it's more culturally responsive. So we now have a template that and our teams work on a regular basis. In consultation to help support each other with that. These are our root causes, just side by side comparison and Director Babbitt had referred back to this earlier. And what we found, what what we're realizing is as we go through each of these plans, and this is also happening across the state. As we're slowly getting better at delivering our plans and we're getting deeper into them and we're realizing like, okay, that didn't really work. What else are we gonna do? What are we gonna do next? And so we really took a much deeper dive in our in our educational stakeholders, our families really asked us, they said, you know, these root costs for two thousand twenty. They were pretty good, but we really want you to get a little bit deeper with them. So as you saw, we really like added things on like. As a overall educational community, we're really, do we really have that that collective lens to really want to make that change for our students? So as you can see, I don't want to read through all these, but as you can see, we've added the level of detail to them. This was done in cooperation with our our educational partners.
And then we have our, we have our vision scholars. Sorry, everything was quiet until it was time for me to go. Now my phone seems to be blowing up. Apologies. We have our vision scholars at our five different schools that we're working with in our virtual academy. In our vision scholars, what we did was we looked at students who often parallel students who have been. Who have been qualified or who've been referred to our special education and saying, what are things that we can do as early intervention? So that our students are not put forward to receive special education assessments and services that we work hard to get our students. At grade level, that we work around the discipline. Sometimes these are students that have had two or more suspensions. And what we create interventions to get to to stop the to stop that cycle of suspensions. We are teachers have done a very good job of working with students. Far fewer referrals to special education in the group of students who are our vision scholars.
And if I, can I add something to this too as well?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
One, one thing that, so what we've done is we've kept the same vision scholars as we had for the two thousand twenty plan. One thing to be aware of when we move into our next school year, some of these vision scholars are going to be moving on to, you know. To like to other schools, right? High school, for example, where they're gonna be moving to middle school. If they don't go to these vision sites, then we will be refilling. We still have to stick with our our hundred seventy three identified students. So we'll find other students to replace. And then those students that have moved on, we still have to track them for an additional two years in order to see if they've qualified for special education down the road. But we've also decided to add early add in to this. And this was based on some of our qualitative data from our community that they felt there needed to be more focused. And then looking at some of the data, we felt like we needed a few, have some vision scholars at the preschool level too. So that'll be incorporated into our two thousand and twenty one plan.
I think this is you, Sean.
Me, okay. So this is, so one of the things we're required to do and is is we come up with our measurable outcomes. And then under those measurable, we look at our root causes and we attach those root causes to the activities that we're developing. So I just want to highlight a few of these. I don't want to read through them all. But we're really looking at by June two thousand twenty three, a hundred percent of our vision scholars will increase their scores. Toward expected growth or growth level benchmark on E L A literacy star or devils. And other standardized tests by a minimum of ten percent. And that was something that our educational partners really wanted. They said ten percent seemed low. We want the minimum of it. So we made sure we added that in there. As we already mentioned, we want to hire a point eight, a C says instructional coordinator. To really help work with our sites closer, make sure that these are individual learning plans are being implemented. That there's data being collected and really to keep us in ed services all on track with making sure we're following the components of the plan. We're going to be having regular meetings with our vision scholar families and ensuring that their voices heard and that we. We adapt the plan as needed, the individual learning plans. One thing that we're gonna add this time is we want to contract with the tutoring company. We had some additional funds for the American Learning Recovery Act that were added and we realized, you know, we want to add some additional tutoring. So. We're working with the tutoring company now to identify students that will be serving with that.
All right, this next measurable outcome is is really about a reduction of chronic absenteeism. Amongst our vision scholars at division schools. So there are five activities. Those activities include. Developing individualized goals for vision scholars and I O Ps. Holding semester meetings with vision scholars and their families, the monitoring of intervention data quarterly. The development of an attendance task force at each vision school. And then the development of an attendance incentive program at each vision school. Those are the measurable outcomes for this or activities for this measurable outcome. Number two. Next slide, please.
Sean, I think this one's you.
Yeah, it's a, there's a little bit of crossover with ours, but it's fine. So one of the things that we really want to do too is we want to make sure we're further working on our multi-tiered system. The supports and really strengthening that tier one and tier two social emotional. Positive behavior supports within our classrooms. And by doing this, we really want to see those discipline referrals drop or suspensions. And ultimately, we want to get into these risk ratios, which basically means that three over like three times more of our African American students are being identified. For O H I than say their white counterparts. So we want to make sure we get under that threshold and get out of significant disproportionality. And ultimately, we just want our, we want our black students to be feel more academically and socially successful in our schools. So as Dr. Shelley mentioned earlier, we have a district task force that we're working on a cultural response and positive behavior matrix. He's been working with multiple principals on that and that's being rolled out. We're also going to be doing, I wanna, we're gonna hold a a district review panel for other health impaired. We're going to be working with a contractor. And the idea of that is that you want to look at some of the records of our students who are identified for O H I. And we want to attach a cultural lens. We want to really look deeply about what was their journey that got to this point. Were there some missteps we made? Were there things that we could have put in place ahead of time so that they weren't identified in this area?
All right, this one is mine. So this is measurable outcome four, which is really about addressing cultural dissonance. And the prayers, one of the main areas that prayers focusing on is building out survey to really talk to, speak to some of the qualitative data. Information that we can gather from families to really understand how they feel, what's the experience, what's missing, what's positive. And asking those types of questions so that families can truly paint an accurate picture for us. And we need to respond to that data in a way that's. Culturally appropriate and responsive. So the surveys will be a big deal in terms of really getting into gathering great information and data that we can then. Work with. And also the schools are developing these equity action plans, which truly is about. Changing the experience for kids in the classroom and making sure that they really are being engaged and learning in a way that's appropriate and engaging with those culturally responsive. Teaching strategies, which is really the best way to ensure that kids feel connected to their instruction. There are also two goals in there that Dr. Mary Bacon. Will be responsible for. So working with our pre K families to really ensure that students have a positive start to their educational journey, K twelve. And then also doing some work at the high school and really seeing what's happening in classrooms and understanding what those challenges look like as we move forward.
So this this slide is just, is again, just to remind it, it's, it gets very confusing that we create, we're essentially creating a C says plan for every year. We're in significant disproportionality and these plans start overlapping with each other. So there's a lot of coordination that's happening. So they're separate. Their separate budgets and their separate activities. However, they do build upon each other. So for example, us keeping our same vision scholars. Was example of them building on each other. And this, we just wanted to show you, these are twenty seven month cycles. Our C says plan one cycle is coming to an end soon. And then our winter, our C says plan two should have started in two thousand twenty one. We are late with this plan. Coming opening after the year of COVID, there's just a lot of barriers in the way. And so we. Apologies, we are going to be starting our two thousand and twenty two plan. Now, so that we can really get this in 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 place quicker. Because the issue is, is the longer we go, the less time we have for spending that money. So we want to make sure that we get back on track with us. And this is our total anticipated budget. Again, we had some American Learning Recovery Act money that was given, so it did increase our amount for our C says budget for this next cycle. We hope to see that in the future too, but we'll see. So next steps, we hopefully will have approval from the board tonight to move forward. We will submit submit this plan to the C D E. However long it takes for them to approve it, then they will either shoot back to us. Please make these, make these updates, please revise, or you're good to go. And then we will start implementing the plan. And then over twenty, less than a twenty seven month window for this, since we're late with this plan, but it'll be, we'll be providing quarterly progress reports. Which I know the board members have been receiving regularly.
Thank you, team. And as mentioned, the next set of slides, we are not going to present at this point, but they is the appendix that includes qualitative. Notes from some of the stakeholder or educational partner engagements. You can see quotes from what people told us. You're all, but you're also able to see the data that we examined and created the root causes. And I believe in the slide deck, there is a link to current data. If if that comes up in the discussion. We can also show you that data as well. And I'm gonna stop my screen share and we're here for any questions.
Thank you so much. Board Directors, please raise your hand if you have questions at this time. And just as a reminder, the action that we are taking tonight is to accept and approve the proposed C says. Plan as it was presented this evening. We'll begin with Vice President Babbitt and go to Director Sinai, followed by Director Vassad.
Thank you so much. Just to note that I clicked on the link and it asked me to request access for that current data. So that needs to be.
That'll get corrected.
And then. It really bothers me that we didn't spend time on the data and that in this update, you didn't actually tell me. What you did last year that worked and didn't work or what needs to be improved on because we have measurable goals that we were supposed to be reaching. By June twenty two of this year. And I have to do a lot of work now looking at the data to go back to figure out where we actually were. With meeting that. And so to me, that goes back to this lack of really trying to be accountable to our work and to our results, right? This data is important for the community to understand. If you don't, I personally don't even know where our teachers, where our actual educators. Are really seeing the results of. Our efforts. It shouldn't be this. This is astounding, this data. It is worse than, I I don't even know how it got this bad and I've been watching. I've been involved. I've been at tech meetings. I've been trying to help and give feedback and done all the community engagement, right? And so you guys have to make it a point. You can't say in here that part of the problem is inconsistent and transparency of data. And then we don't even make it a point in these meetings to show the people the data. What, I mean, and this has been happening for a good two years now where people just don't even understand. Why we're saying we have to do so much focus on specifically for African American students, right? So I would encourage everybody to really read the data section of this and do the math. And look at this anecdotal information and see how we're not living up to it. Part, everything about this thing says we need more training. We need more cultural competency training. We need more this, we need more that. Nowhere is it built in on how we're gonna actually get more training in. We have six days of professional development. How are we supposed to honestly change anything with six days of professional development? We haven't been able to do it in years. So what makes y'all think we're gonna be able to do it next year or the year after? So what makes y'all think we're going to be able to do it next year or the year after? What, what is the real will of this leadership team is what I really want to know. Because if it's this, I can tell you right now, we're going to be sitting here with the same C S A S plan rolling over. And nobody's going to be able to tell me we spent in three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Of that forty thousand dollars is tutoring. Twenty two thousand five hundred dollars is cultural competency training. Half of what the people are saying they need is more direct services and the educators need training. That's not where we're spending our money though. So I don't understand. And I don't, and I really don't appreciate being asked to approve this plan. The first time I'm even seeing the plan. Thanks.
I would like to give staff an opportunity to, to respond to Director Babett's questions and concerns.
Ruben, do you want me to speak to some of the information that's in the slide deck or?
Yeah, you can speak to some of the data. Definitely. I, I Vice President Babett, I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to spend more time with this data and making sure that the data is transparent. I totally agree with you on that. And Ruth, do you want to speak to the data?
Yeah, I can. I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if we have time to go through the deck. I gave each of the directors access to the link. I apologize for forgetting to do that. So all five of you should be able to see. So it's on, on the first slide in the data deck, there's a brand new set of data that we literally finished pulling this week. Because for the first time this year, we've been able to actually compare full data to current data to see where students are making progress. And it's really interesting as I'm, I, I'm a bit of a data geek. So it's really fascinating looking at the different pockets, but basically the data is for the four elementary schools. And the one middle school that have this, the scholars, the vision scholars. And there were really interesting patterns in the data. There were some areas where it shows our kids are really succeeding as a result of the work that's happening. And then there are some spaces where it shows that there's still work to be done. So it's actually really encouraging to see that some of the work that's happening is having the, the correct outcome for our kids. Some of the vision scholars are definitely doing better as a result of the work being put in. Thank you, whoever's sharing. And so the, the Dibbles data, as we've discussed before, is for really for first and second grade. This is the literacy assessment. It's a whole composite group of literacy based subtests. And I want to explain this because it, it won't make sense necessarily if you don't understand what's, what's being shown because there's a lot of different ways to slice the data. So essentially we color coded the data we had looking at both the vision scholars and then all the other students in the schools who are not vision scholars. So there's two graphs for every data point. So if you show the next slide. This is for the vision scholars and you can see that at the top of the slide. And this shows for the first graders and the second graders who are vision scholars. How much progress they made using the Dibbles assessment. Now, what this slide does not tell you is whether or not they're at grade level. Because that would be a whole nother data deck. This is just showing you if they're making progress because the ultimate goal is to get kids to do better and make progress towards standards. So you can see, and at first glance, I know this slide looks mostly red and orange. And there's a little green, which means they have the largest jump. But if you look at the next slide. These are all the kids in those grade levels. There are kids who are making almost no progress in those dark red bars. If you look back at that first slide, we don't have any vision scholars in that category. So every single student who was identified as a vision scholar, the majority of whom were struggling academically are all making a decent amount of progress in terms of the, the growth they've shown from September to now. So every single child represented on that first slide has made at least forty points worth of progress in that Dibbles assessment. That's not true for all of their peers. So I would argue that that's, that demonstrates that something is working and helping this group of students to be more successful. This is, this slide shows all the first graders at those four schools. And all the second graders at those four schools and the numbers in each bar are the numbers of students represented in each category. The previous slide shows you the vision scholars, which is a much smaller cohort. It's not a lot of kids. There are nineteen kids represented in first grade. And then do math quickly, twelve kids represented in second grade, but it's really encouraging to see that all of them are making between forty and seventy points worth of progress across the year, which isn't finished yet. We still have a couple more months. So I thought that was really encouraging. It's not perfect, but it does show that something's working. And this is the first time we've really been able to see that. And of course, we can also dig into this site by site and student by student to help each school team really identify any barriers that each of these students have. And we've already given every school site data on every single child. So now they can dig in and, and look at specific reasons why they may not be so successful. The rest of the slide deck focuses on star. Which is used grades three through eight. And these graphs show you the same pattern. So this is math for the vision scholars in third, fourth and fifth grade. And just for the vision scholars, the next slide is the whole group of students. And you can see on this one that there's, you know, there's a different pattern in, in this particular area with third through fifth grade. The whole cohort of third, fourth and fifth grade students have more students who are making more progress than the group of vision scholars. If you go back to the previous slide. So the patterns are different. And essentially the reason we, we constructed the data this way is you can compare the patterns for the vision scholars with the patterns for the whole cohort. And sometimes they look like this and the whole cohort's doing better. And sometimes they're the other way around. And each grade level looks different. And you can see on the previous slide, there are students doing really well. And I'm not sure where we went back to.
I'm in math. I went back to math.
Went back to math. So third grade students, there are a lot more students who are making more growth. It's not quite the same pattern in fourth grade or in fifth grade. And there will be reasons for that. They have different teachers. There might be different curriculum being used. And now that we have this data, we can help school sites to dig into it and try to figure out what it is that's generating those successful areas. And what it is that's maybe not causing students to do as well. So I think that was third, third through fifth math. And essentially, so I just really wanted to point out that each of these slides are in pairs. So you have your vision scholars first and then the whole group second. So you can kind of track through and see the patterns that exist for the whole group at that grade level. And then the patterns that exist for the, the group of vision scholars. And then this last section is Longfellow. They're the only middle school represented as part of the C S A S plan. This is really interesting. There's no sixth graders because those kids were sixth graders last year. So now they're seventh or eighth. So that's why it doesn't have sixth grade represented. And this one is math. And if you look at the next slide, you can see the comparison. So as you go back and forth. And math's a struggle. We know math's a struggle. We've clearly got work to do right here around seventh graders in the vision scholars program because there weren't any making seventy points worth of growth. So this is definitely an area where Longfellow staff. Honestly, every site has work to do with math. I don't think this is unique to Longfellow. But this shows that there's, there are clear patterns across grade levels and it looks a little bit different for our vision scholars. But when you look at the next two slides for literacy, the vision scholars are outperforming their grade level peers. So it's kind of interesting when you look at it back and forth. There's, as I said earlier, there's areas where there's clearly success occurring and then areas where there's clearly work to do still. So within E L A in English, those middle school students are doing better in the vision scholar program than they are across the board. And the last couple of slides that we didn't touch on, that was, those are grades. So if you look at those last two slides that are in black and white. And there are two types of grades given to middle schoolers, habits of work and standards based practices. So what this shows you, and I, I think you can see the speaker notes at the bottom. Basically, there's a couple of really interesting patterns here because we wanted to look at how grades line up against star. And it's interesting while their scores on star are demonstrating progress. The grades aren't necessarily following the same pattern. So that's a whole nother conversation. But again, it's a place where we can really have some, do some work with the school sites. And look at how those grades are assigned versus how students are doing on the assessments. So it just, it makes for some interesting reading. And just as a point of reference, a four is the highest grade. A one is the lowest grade. And there are some differences between the way we assess habits of work, which is basically effort and engagement. And how we assess student proficiency, which that, which is that standards based practice is great. So when you have time to take a, a look a little deeper. There are some interesting patterns in there too. Thank you, Ruben, for letting me explain that.
Thank you for sharing that. That gives me some comfort that what we're doing is actually making a difference for, for those students. And it also really proves that when you take a dedicated targeted approach to our students, that you can make a difference, which is part of why you see that data flipping. Couple of other questions that I had around equity walks. And the equity action plan. I'm just wondering how our equity rubric is being considered or if it's being considered at all. One thing that I found we do in Berkeley is we create what we've already created several times instead of building on what was already there. So I'm hoping that somewhere the equity rubric, which was research based hours of intelligent minds clearly when the first time I read it, I thought, wow. Berkeley would just really take this seriously. We could really move the needle. And so I refuse to let the equity rubric go. I'm sure everybody knows because I keep bringing it up. But I really hope that you all will take their equity rubric and, and, and not start from scratch, but really build upon that if you have not. And then with the P B I S discipline matrix. I'm hoping that we can add transportation in that fold. Because I, I know that there are issues with transportation and them being able to set their own rules around disciplining students on the bus. And to me, I don't think that we take that customer service approach enough. Really, that is the, the child's first touch point when they get on that bus. That is their first welcoming school environment, right? And that can really set the tone for the entire day. And we really, and so I'm hoping if that hasn't been communicated, because I've mentioned it before, that that is included in this disciplinary matrix and how we look at our policies and procedures. And also really taking that customer service approach when we treat our students, because the same harsh treatment that our students get, it converts over to parents. I can tell you firsthand. They will treat me the same way they will treat my child. Because it's implicit and explicit bias we're talking about here. So we really have to rethink that the parent is like the customer service model, right? We are our teach, we are our child's first teacher. And we're going to be with them long after that year. And we're going to have to deal with all the effects. That whatever caregiver or administrator or educator. Whatever those harsh treatments are, now I'm undoing and I'm rebuilding and we're supplementing. And so we really have to think about how our actions impact a child and a parent really for the rest of their lives. If you guys, I'm sure you guys know because you've been hearing this in your focus groups. That parents are really traumatized by the things they go through trying to support their child. It's almost hard to get to an action because there's still so much there that they still need to talk about. We see this in our African-American success framework updates as well. So if we're going to ask people to share their stories, right, then we got to be willing to, to really build an accountability matrix, equity rubric, customer service kind of satisfaction model. And just how we treat people when we talk about wellness and wholeness and climate and belonging. So that was, that was the last of my comments. Thank you all for giving me so much time.
Directors, I'm sorry. Mr. Shelley, please go ahead, right ahead, Dr. Shelley, I apologize.
Oh, no, thank you. Yeah, we, we've been, the, the discipline matrix task force has been meeting monthly. We've done some work with our consultant, looking at education code, trying to understand. You know, what the code says, looking at alternative means of correction, intervention, and really putting something in place. A, a document, a handbook that really looks at having fairness and equity, as I said before, and, and having a cultural lens as we work with our students. And so the, the hope is that this will support the reduction of over representation of African-American students with discipline. We recognize that it is, and that is an issue. But taking what Vice President Babett said about looking also at the transportation. We're trying to make it something that's universal. But that is a focus that we haven't quite delved into. So that is something that we will circle back and, and consider that as we continue to build this thing out. The matrix, the team will be meeting monthly when we get into twenty two, twenty three school year. And the, the positive behavior matrix itself is something that we're going to work on revising every single year to make sure that we are making changes so that we can better serve all of our students.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And just one more thing, we did say in our policy subcommittee. If, to, to think about how whatever policies that we have in place, how does that relate to the matrix that you're trying to develop and, and, and implement? So you'll probably be hearing from us to ask you to come and present and to share. And just to make sure that we're being thoughtful and cohesive with our policies on what you're also trying to build. Thanks.
Vice President, or Director Sinai, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for this wealth of information. I mean, it's, there's so much packed in here and, and I, and I have to be honest, and with the time I haven't been able to unpack it, you know, there's, there's a lot in there. And one recommendation I would have, and, and this is fairly consistent recommendation, when we get these data packets. It would be really helpful to have an executive summary. Director Steele Brown, just when you were going over, what does number four mean? You know, I look at these and I don't have the, the background knowledge to interpret them on paper. And to try and spend a lot of time going through that without a, a guide or, I, I mean, what's really helpful with the evaluation assessment is to get analysis. So it'd be great if there were ways that, you know, kind of when, when we get these big data decks to have some executive summary kind of thing that can give us information because it's a wealth. I mean, I, I, I love, I'm, I'm a data geek. But I need to understand the data in order to interpret it. So I'll go back and look at stuff, but if, you know, that, this is not just in relation to the C S A S data. It's African-American success. It's like, and this has been like since the twenty twenty vision. It's like we get a lot of raw data and a lot of the message gets lost in pages and pages of raw data. Because most people don't have the ability to, to, to but if, to summarize it, that would be especially those, those like, you know, look, I saw the difference between this and this. This is what this, these are the patterns we're seeing. Would be super helpful. So.
So it's actually in there. If you take a look at the speaker notes at the bottom of the slides, there's a little summary at the bottom of each slide and it shares what the patterns are and it shares some of those specifics like what's the one, what's the four. So you, I don't know if you're able to see it or if the settings automatically show you the notes at the bottom, but it should, that should help a little bit. And we can definitely do more of that moving forward and make sure there's kind of a, some extra slides or we collate it differently. That totally makes sense because I, as I was going through it today, I was like, oh, we need to explain all these words and acronyms and numbers and make sure they make sense to people who aren't doing this all day.
And then I think for the board level, what we need are what are the big ticket items that we've learned from the data? You know, and then you can go through the weeds with each and every school. But the board, we need to know what the trends and the patterns are, you know, and, and the backup for that. Which, I mean, again, I think the wealth of data in there is super helpful. The question that I have, and I don't know if this, I don't know who, who, who gets it. So I'll just punt it out there is I'm trying to understand the subsequent years, which is a little odd. But and I think this goes a little bit to what Vice President Babett was, was saying as well. Is how are we building upon the six, so the success that happens from one year to the next and then okay, I'm going to just like kind of blurt out my questions and then you can kind of maybe try to sort them out, but I'm not exactly clear on how vision schools got identified and how vision scholars got identified. So as we're going through these year to year. Are there are there strategies or techniques or tools that have proven effective that we then are looking to take to scale? proven effective that we then are looking to take to scale to other schools and students and scholars? So I'm not exactly sure, or are we in three years just looking at what impact the vision schools had? And like where, where, how does this become a greater scalability for successful practice?
Sean, do you want to speak to the selection of school and scholars piece? So that was actually a great question because I think it's important to understand that the CCAS plan is not just supposed to be just the one plan that helps improve the outcomes for our Black African-American students. This plan is supposed to be a focus plan that helps reveal these patterns. And we, and yes, we should be taking some of these strategies that we're learning and applying it to our larger district. And the plan itself does ask for supplemental funding too. This is, or this is not supposed to replace funding. This is supposed to supplement other funding, other plans that we already have in our district. And that's actually part of the process we have to go through. We have to look at what are our current practices? What are our policies? What are the things that we have in place right now? And how are we going to grow those and make them better? So, so that's why I think the CCAS plan is powerful. It's a very challenging plan because they have these overlapping plans. The reason, the way we chose our vision scholars, Berkeley is a little unique and other districts, you know, due to our, our integration policy where we have our students spread out everywhere. We don't have schools except for Longfellow, of course, where we have higher percentages of of Black students versus other schools. So we had to look, so all of our schools essentially across the board are all having the same results for our Black students. There's not any school that's like doing worse than other. There's basically a similar pattern. There are small distinctions. So when we chose our scholar sites, we did look at dashboard data. We looked at, you know, the number of socioeconomic, socioeconomics. We looked at chronic absenteeism. We looked at scores. And so ultimately, we came up with these schools. We did choose Longfellow because we know that they have a higher percentage of our Black African-American students and we wanted to make sure that that support was there and that focus was there. Now, as far as our vision scholars are, we look at like socioeconomics. We looked at the number of absences they may have had, and we also look at their scores as well as a way for us to choose who those vision scholars were.
Can I ask a follow-up? In the sense, so like King has four kids. I'm assuming there's more than four.
No, sorry, that's King, that's the preschool.
Oh, is that the CDC? Okay.
CDC, apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the way the plan is actually, if you look, if you look at the guidelines around the plan, they really want you, they really suggest not focusing on like every school in the district, because then the plan becomes very unmanageable. So I think the idea is that in this next 2023, we have to decide as a team, okay, do we want to add additional schools? Do we want to add additional scholars? Or do we want to continue what we're doing and add additional activities to support these scholars? So that'll be, have to be, that'll be a decision that we're going to have to make with our next plan, sorry, the 2022 plan.
So I'm sorry, just, so like what I really like about this plan, it actually is very explicit about root causes that we've been talking about for years, but it doesn't necessarily show up anywhere. So I guess the root causes aren't just these schools. I mean, don't just exist in these schools. So that's why I'm like, so if what we're trying to tackle are these strategies that are also going to impact the root causes, does the plan require like in year three, any kind of reflection or discussion about what practices as a district you're adapting or changing that's beyond just the vision schools?
Yeah, there is, there's a reflection that each at the end of the plan. So for this 2020 plan that's wrapping up, we'll need to provide a reflection piece. And we're, you know, every, every quarter, we're providing progress reports to report out how we're doing. And then in the very end, we do have a series of questions that they ask. Yeah, you're welcome.
Director Vasidov.
Hi, thank you so much to the staff for presenting this information and I just wanted to echo the requests made by fellow Director Sinai. It would be great to have an executive summary and to get the data beforehand with an executive summary so that we can notice the trends and the patterns when we ask our questions. My question has to do with chronic absenteeism and thank you, Dr. Shelley, for your presentation and how you touched upon that. How are we rewarding, you know, families for showing up on time when there's improvements around chronic absenteeism in like a positive way, right? Like I've seen this in other districts where like SFUSD, a couple of schools in the Tenderloin, when they had identified a pool of students that were chronically absent or truant, they were rewarded by, you know, participating in a bike blender. Like they had all these like positive ways of rewarding. And it's one of the middle schools that I used to work at. So I'm wondering like, how is that in our district, right? How do we reward families when we see changes in intruency levels or in chronic absenteeism, when we see better attendance? And then I have another question after that.
Yeah, so currently, currently, you know, schools do different things in terms of some of the families that they work with. So for example, Berkeley High School, some of the students who we work with through SARD, they, Amon Watson, who's the Dean of Attendance, has an incentive program where she buys kids lunches when they improve attendance over time. So different schools do different things. But one of the things that we want to do, in particular with the vision schools with this upcoming year, is to really create an incentive program at those schools, something that has sustainability that the school sites are doing with the Attendance Task Force Team that'll be at each site, working with them to develop other programs, whether it's monthly themes for the month that kind of get the kids excited about coming to school on a regular basis, outreach with families, discussing the importance of school, and really building a program where there's opportunities for students to show improvement in attendance and then it gets, and then to celebrate it. Right? We want to celebrate when kids are improving, but at the same time, not, you know, we want students to come to school every single day. But setting up a program where even if a student misses one day and say we're doing a monthly, you know, attendance celebration, right? And not have it be only for students with perfect attendance, but really recording, rewarding improved attendance and having that continual growth. And ultimately, obviously, we want no students to be chronically absent because we understand the effects that chronic absenteeism has on student learning when we're missing school, that's miss, missed learning opportunities. And so it is going to be a focus moving forward, particularly at the the vision schools, but district-wide, but that division schools will continue to receive more support through the CCAS plan.
That's great. Yeah, I love these like positive, kind of like rewarding messages and that it seems like you're working on those, on that for the vision schools. And I think like Vice President Babett mentioned, the connection to transportation is important, but for me, maybe for another reason. Because one of the things that I noticed when I used to work at the MTA is that oftentimes low-income students maybe didn't know that they qualified for free bus passes and that's true of Alameda County. And I know that they've tried to work with our district. And so our adolescents, especially low-income adolescents, you know, do qualify for this. And so I'm wondering if there's information to families being given around transportation options? Like if that's a barrier, right? If that's something that's impacting chronic absenteeism and truancy, I think it'd be great to work with our OFI staff to address those issues with our families. And then lastly, my comment is more just constructive feedback for the district. I see on Slide eight that there is a mention of working with Latinos and Niños on retention of teachers of color. I guess it's kind of rubbing me the wrong, the wrong way in this presentation. I'll be quite honest about it. Because I've seen those meetings where Latinos and Niños have said, we, with that 36% of our, you know, vision scholars who are Latinx, we want to work with the district on supporting our families. And I understand the primary focus absolutely should be on our African-American students, no doubt. But for that 36% of families, I know that this community group has asked to work with the district and we have not done that yet. And so I just want to be self-reflective about that. And I know Associate Superintendent O'Dell, I'm going to direct this to you, that you are working on a Spanish language workshop for SPED. And I do hope that that 36% pool of students who are vision scholars that identify as Latinx, if their parents are monolingual, that they be invited to that workshop. Because I think it'll be really, you know, this is something, it's not just about the students, it's not just about working with our schools, it's about working with the families too, right? And so if we are talking about culturally competent outreach, then we want to make sure that multilingual outreach is a part of that. And so, you know, whatever we can do to make sure for those 36% of the students whose parents, where English may not be their first language, that we are offering educational opportunities around, you know, the issues that we've discussed, like the difference between a 504 plan and IEP. And to, so that, you know, we can prevent disproportionality. And I know that we're approaching disproportionality with our Latinx students. We're not there yet. But we want to continue to be as proactive as we can in a district. We don't want to get there and then try to fix the problem later. So thank you.
Vice President Babett, you have a question?
Yes, I know we need to move on. I just wanted to comment on the attendance gap, however, because, you know, I remember when Longfellow had 99% attendance, it still had the worst results, right? And when I look at this attendance data that you all have given me, it's really not that huge a difference compared to the huge disparity in outcomes of the rest of the data. And so while I appreciate focusing on attendance, we really need to talk about what happens when they're there. Because they're not missing that much compared to these rates, that's creating this big of a difference. So I just, you know, I remember working with LCAP Plan and the PAC where they said, well, if you could just get them in the seats, then we'll educate them. So we went all out and we, I mean, with PCAT, with everybody, we were like, get in the seats, get in the seats. Longfellow had 99% attendance rate and still the worst results in the district. So I'm a little jarred by this attendance excuse, really. Because really, when they're there, the, if the, for the gap to be this big, they would have to miss a lot more school than they're missing. There's a whole lot of other stuff happening. Thanks. Oh, another question about equity walks. When the K through eight, oh, President Brown, did you have comments to make?
Well, you must have seen me just mouth that that was my question.
Okay, I'll be quiet. I didn't know. Okay, thanks, I'll be quiet.
I want to give staff the opportunity to respond to.
I just wanted to say, we, I don't disagree with you and the team I know doesn't disagree. Attendance is just one, one factor. And I 100% agree. What is more important is when those students are there, how are they being taught? Are they engaged in class? What are the instructional practices that we're doing? When we notice a student become disengaged, how are we changing practice at that moment to reengage? Sometimes you got to take that lesson plan and say, you know what, this lesson plan is not working. I'm throwing it out the door and now I'm going to reengage the staff. So we agree 100%. And we also want to make sure we're getting at the root causes of why students might not be there because they don't feel comfortable being there, or there are other factors in their life that are keeping them from getting to school.
Right, because when we, when we look at, when we look at, and we're just talking about chronic absenteeism, you know, there essentially are risk factors that lead to chronic absenteeism. And it could be four buckets. It can be family risk factors or community risk factors or school risk factors or student risk factors. The more risk factors you have, the more likely a student may become chronically absent from school. And what the data shows is that when students are chronically absent, kindergarten, first grade, by the time they do the third grade testing, they're three, four times more likely not to be proficient. And then students who are not proficient are more likely not to have positive educational outcomes, graduation and such. And so really, looking at each individual student, providing support to remove the barriers or to address risk factors so that then the students can be able to access the learning. But as Sean said, that is one factor that impacts, you know, student achievement. But it is an important factor though.
I'm going to ask my question really quickly because we have about 10 more minutes before we need to do an extension of the meeting. So my question was around the Equity Walks. Vice President Babett, I'm not sure if this is yours, X, same question. But I'm familiar that, Ms. Dean, maybe you can speak to this. I'm familiar that we do K through eight Equity Walks. And I'm wondering how this is different from the Equity Walks with Dr., you mentioned her name earlier. Thank you. How this is different from the Equity Walks that we're currently doing?
As an outside viewpoint looking in.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dean, your background is pretty noisy.
Well, with Dr. Bacon, I would say that we get more objective data than we do when we're doing our Equity Walks in our schools. You know, the bias is less there, I think. I think that it's that, it's the professional lens, it's the outside person looking in. I think that can be helpful in the, in the work that she's done with us and with our vision schools.
And something to remember too, this is actually our students that are leading it. So it's a little different than the adults leading the work. I am, you know, I, I'm, I think they need, they both need to happen. We also need to be going through our schools as a, as a team and working with our school sites and doing that. But this specific strategy is really working with kids and getting their lens. And then going and meeting with that staff and saying, well, here's what you're, here's how our students are feeling about this school. It's one little snapshot, you know, so, but.
And it's with Dr. Bacon's expertise.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you for, for that information. Thank you, thank you for that. We will need to actually take action on this tonight. Typically, we would see this as a discussion item first and it would come back to the board for action, but we're actually taking action tonight in the, the long discussion that we had around it. And so, but that's why you see it agendized the way you see it this evening. And so if you don't mind, Associate Superintendent, if putting up the slide that has the direct ask for the board, so that the motion maker can make sure that their motion is made depending on what that says or directly in relation to what that says. And while you're pulling that up, I'll go to Director Sinai for a question.
Just a quick question. What is motivating the decision needing to be made tonight, say, versus giving us more time to look at it and look at it at the next meeting?
I believe Ms. Sean spoke to that a little bit earlier around the timing of this being due back in the winter of 2021. And, you know, due to COVID and things that happened around there, the pause. And so that's the urgency that we're seeing a little bit around tonight. Sean or Superintendent Stevens or Associate Superintendent, did you need to speak to that further?
No, I think you, you got it. Like the California Department of Education is also going to take their time to pick through the plan. A lot, there's been, you know, I've talked to other districts, they've had their plans kicked back. We wanted to make sure we did this plan a little more thoroughly so that it doesn't get kicked back and ask for revisions, but we're just hoping to get it in front of the CD so that they can approve it and then we can start implementing it. And now here's the thing to remember too, you can always do amendments to these plans. We actually did an amendment to the 2020 plan. The Equity Walks weren't in the original plan. But we decided, well, you know what, we need a little more ground. We need a little more on the ground, a little perspective. So there are things we can change later on if we see that the plan's not working. You know, we know the best laid plans sometimes need adapting along the way in response to how, how our vision scholars are responding.
So can I just get, so we're basically approving a plan that's for the school year 21, 22. So we're in the middle of it now. Or is it for calendar, it's, is it, it's not calendar year 21, right? So it's basically to do a plan that we're kind of over half into.
Some of the activities have actually been happening. Not every activity in their plan is all funded through CCAS. There's some activities that are just that we do, right? So some of these activities have actually been taking place. It's that, it's that there's other pieces that have not fully, like for example, the Point Eight Vision, the coordinator, like that's not an action we can implement because there's monies directly attached to that.
Okay, got it, got it, thanks.
And hopefully the visual will help with, you can see where the timelines are overlapping. We're asking the board to approve the 2021 plan, which is CCAS Plan Number Two. And you can see the start and end dates of that window. And as we mentioned, we will be back for a third plan. And like, and as we mentioned, we will be back for a third plan with the hope for an approval in November.
So I'll, I'll move support for the plan with, um, you know, kind of with the, the added information that we're asking for, like when we get the quarterly reports or when we're preparing for the next plan. That we get some lessons learned and things, but I'll, I'll move to approve the plan. And do I simultaneously move to extend the meeting?
Um, let's handle it, uh, one thing by one thing. So let's go ahead and, um, look for a second to Director Sinai's motion about approving the CCAS plan, uh, plan number two. For a second.
I'm sorry, can I, you didn't say the unreadiness or we have to wait for the second?
We have to, uh, we'll get to unreadiness in one second.
I'll second it, President Brown.
Okay, uh, is, it's been seconded by Director Sinai. It's been moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Alper. Now we can call for, um, unreadiness.
So what we're actually approving is a measurable outcome piece. Are we also approving this, this spend piece of three hundred and twenty four thousand?
It would be approved of.
And so if, for example, there needs to be more funding in like cultural competency training or all these other things. Would that have to come back for an amendment or could we would just do that through another budget or another process? Because really you haven't given me the details of how you're going to execute cultural competency training. Or a lot of this stuff with the time that our staff already has. Right? Which we already have built in. Um, and is some of this money to pay staff to be a part of this training? Is it to pay staff to be a part of these monthly meetings? Like, I don't have enough of the hows really.
Right. So we, we can definitely bring amendments to the plan and we could also provide more detail to the board. Um, if, if that's helpful.
And, and know with some of these, uh, the cultural responsive work, that's dealing with a smaller group. So for example, uh, one of them will be working with a, um, a contractor who will be working with more of our, uh, our, our, our gatekeepers of, so for example, our school psychologists, our SS, uh, like SST, Student Success Team or, or cost team members from sites. And remember, it's only from these vision sites. If there are additional people we want involved, then there's going to have to be other funding sources to support that.
So Vice President Babett, I, and if, if Director Alper is supportive, I would be fine with a friendly amendment that says, come back and talk to us about what the cultural competency plan is to, to implement.
Director Alper, is there a second to that, uh, friendly amendment?
I mean, I guess to me, that's a question for, for you and the superintendent to figure out about agendizing other items. I mean, I mean.
We can, we can work on it. You seconded the first motion. I just want to make sure you are okay to second this one. The friendly amendment to it and the superintendent, I can come back on it, but we have one more minute before we.
Okay, yes.
For approval. So it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Badias, can you please call the role quickly?
Could it, Director Muscati, yes, one? Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. The most, motion passes. Is there a motion to extend the meeting?
Is Vasudev that?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Skipped me, Ms. Badias. That's okay. You have the majority of the board, I guess.
Please let the record be like Director Vasudev's vote. What is your vote, Director Vasudev?
Director Vasudev, to make it formal.
Yes, thank you. Uh, is there a motion to approve, to extend the meeting?
I'm going to extend it to eleven twenty five.
It's been moved to extend to eleven twenty five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Sinai covering readiness. Hearing none, Ms. Badias, can you please call the role?
Student Director Muscati, yes, one?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev? Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. All right, we will now move on to our, uh, next action item, which is agenda is as, uh, action item. Sorry, before we do that, thank you so much to, um, to Sean and to Debbie and to Ruth. Um, and to, we missed, and to Dr. Shelley F. There you go. Dr. Shelley for joining us, uh, for this presentation tonight and for staying here so late with us. Please go get some rest. Uh, and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Well, maybe not us. We won't see you tomorrow, but BUSD will. So thank you so much and have a good evening. All right, now we'll move to item thirteen point one. Um, which is the approval of a new job description for the Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging coming out of education, uh, services. And so the Department of Equity Achievement and Belonging is a new, uh, team in the Education Services Department of BUSD. Um, and it will consist of a couple of different things. And so I'll ask Associate Superintendent Aurelio to, uh, come in his own way to introduce us to this new Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging position.
Good evening, everyone. I will keep this brief because I, I know we want to discuss, um, this item and we are, we're on the clock. So this evening, what I'm bringing, uh, forward for approval, hopefully from you all, is the creation of the Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging. This is a repurposing of a vacant director position. Um, we have gone this year with a vacant director position for OFI. Um, and it would look a little bit different, um, if this, if the board approves this job description. So essentially, we, I would like to share two elements. One, just some highlights of the proposed job duties of this new director position. Attached to the agenda is the full job description. That is not referenced here in the slide deck, but you have access to it. And then, um, coupled with that, I, I want to show a sort of mock up of what an org chart might look like for this Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging and some components of Ed Services that would be shifted and moved underneath this director. Um, I will preface that by saying that this, this org chart is not complete. Um, and it's not something I'm asking necessarily. I want feedback, but we're not going to make that decision this evening around this org chart. There are still some components, um, that would be worked on, uh, moving forward. And really the focus for, for this evening is really to talk through the director position. So some of the key elements that the director would be working through, um, is to really focus on one, holding the work of the engagement and equity, the, what was traditionally in, in our district, the OFI, the OFI department. Um, they would be the leader of that department. In addition to that, we would be building in the achievement component because we know achievement is not only starting from the home. And, you know, first instruction starts at home, but also works in the classrooms. And so we're building in the multi-tiered systems of supports underneath this director. With that, we would be doing some restructuring and bringing in our support personnel, our RTI instructors underneath this, uh, this department. We would further, um, this district Berkeley has done a wonderful job of really calling out really focused, uh, initiatives. Everything from our Black Lives Matters Resolution, our Latinx Resolution, um, the work we are currently undergoing and hopefully wrapping up the framework for the African American Success Program, uh, the framework, the initiative. And as we just heard, the work around CCAS as well. Um, these affinity-based targeted programs, um, would also have the leadership of this director, uh, attached with them. The other component is really keeping, um, the, the work of educational services highly focused on our neediest groups, our neediest students. Uh, that's our African American, black students, our Latinx students, our English learner students, and of course, our special education students. The focus, um, being truly supported and collaborated with, with this director. This director would be part of the educational services. And you, you saw a big portion of that team this evening as part of that CCAS plan. We do work collaboratively. Um, the goal is not to stay in siloed departments, but really working as a whole. Um, with this director having a strong focus on the equity work, um, that we all are part of. We all need to own. Um, but it really helps with the accountability, especially, um, I was really happy to hear Vice President, uh, Babett mention accountability and how do we sort of keep our staff and ourselves accountable to this work? And lastly, I just want to share, like I said, a mock up of what a org chart might look like. You see a couple, I want to just point out a couple of items here. The red are management positions and the, our oranges, yellow are non-management positions, just sort of distinction in the color coding here. We have the existing African American Success Project Manager. That would be moved from the Director of Categoricals position, which is, which currently is under into this department. Um, if we do, we just approved this evening, the CCAS Coordinator as part of the CCAS plan. Because that is a general education service, um, something I hope we, we heard loud and clear in the CCAS plan. Um, they, this would work really well with the RTI folks, also working with this Director of Achievement and Belonging. And then we have here listed an OFI supervisor. I do want to note that the OFI supervisor position is one that we are still grappling with as a district organizationally, one with budget constraints and also just process of how we will structure the, um, supervision of site OFI specialists. Um, we have heard from multiple stakeholder groups, uh, including from some of our unions where they'd want to see this, these positions being managed directly by site principals. So that's something we are taking into consideration. And depending on what happens with the supervisor position, we would decide on exactly how that supervision would line up if that would go directly to the Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging. Or would, would it be a shared hybrid model of supervision with the site administrator? And then I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Uh, Board Directors, uh, we'll begin our questions with, uh, Director Alper.
Thanks, President Brown. Thank you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I just want to quickly say, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this and I've had number of conversations with, with you, but also with Dr. Stevens about this and, um, and think that it, 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 it does reflect to sort of deliberation, thoughtfulness that, um, that maybe we didn't have time to do when we created, when we created the position that we haven't yet been able to fill. And so, um, so I think this makes a lot of sense. This, this position reports to your position, right? Okay, in Ed Services.
Correct.
And I just, and, and the other thing that I, that I really like about this is, is your decision to make this a certificated position, which I think will make it, um, uh, much easier to fill and, and, and more appropriately filled. So, um, President Brown, at the appropriate time, I'm happy to, um, move for approval of this item.
Uh, thank you, uh, Director Alper. I'll keep then my, when we move to the portion for the motion. Uh, Director Sinai and then Director Vasudev.
Um, I appreciate the thought that has gone into this. And one of the things that I like about the framework is that, um, it doesn't have our, um, our equity or affinity group work as well as our family engagement work siloed. Um, I think in previous iterations, I've seen, you know, family engagement off over here, African American success framework over here. And so much of what we're doing with our, our affinity work is it overlaps in strategies around family and parent engagement. And so how the OFI team connects up with those other three um, areas of work, I think, is really strategic. Um, and how our Latinx and Black Lives Matter, um, resolutions go in that. I, I have kind of a question. Um, I, I actually have a reservation around it being a certificated. I'm willing to go with it. But I really want the option that if we can't find someone in a speedy enough way that it gets, goes back. Because the difference with a certificated position is you can't hire a classified. A position that's classified, you could hire a certificated. So, um, just because they're certificated doesn't necessarily mean they've got experience with really good authentic family engagement. Um, and so I hope, and I know that you and I talked about it in relation to the job description, that family experience and family engagement um, is, is a required qualification of this job description, not a like, oh, they work with parents at a school site. But that they really know strategy and philosophy and, and practice in family engagement. Um, and that we pivot if we need to. Uh, and we don't leave it open for too long. Um, I, I guess one of the concerns that I also have is I, I believe that the supervisor should remain. I, I know we're not voting on that tonight. But I will, I will say that. And I feel like when we're in these budget deliberations, right now, when we created the OFI Director, we created a program supervisor position. So that, that was in the budget. So why any of those supervisory positions aren't in as much risk as the OFI supervisor? Uh, is a little imbalanced to me. Like, why can't the RTI TSA's report to their principals? I'm not suggesting they do. But the same argument could be made. So I think we need to have a genuine discussion about the role of the supervisor and not have that on the cutting board. Unless we're going to look at that whole band and see what supervisor roles need, need to actually be there. I feel like if, if, if we want, um, the boots on the ground with the high quality family engagement that we said we needed during the pandemic and beyond. Um, having that supervisor to be able to work with those OFI staff are, is, is really important. But again, we're not voting on that right now, but I like the structure in that context.
If, if the board wouldn't mind, maybe when we do vote for the director, I would really like to know as Director Sinai shared, their, their stance on the OFI supervisor, not as a directive, but as a, you know, what is the will of the board or what's the board feeling around that position? It'd be great feedback to have specifically.
Uh, Director Vasudev?
Yeah, thank you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio for bringing this, um, to the board. I just want to thank you also for being really thoughtful in planning this out and talking to us during your due diligence. I know that this has been top of mind for you for several weeks. And so I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into the job description. My question is, maybe you can speak to this, um, because it does, in the job description that this director position will ensure full implementation of district prioritized, prioritized initiatives. And it lays out our African American success framework, Black Lives Matter Resolution, Latinx and other affinity-based services and programs. Now with our ethnic studies TSA, we've been doing, you know, a lot of extra work that maybe isn't here, but it could, you know, what role do they play in it? And I'll talk to you specifically about the affinity group. I love that our district this year, you know, thank you for your leadership too, with our different, um, monthly affinity, you know, celebrations. And I know that our ethnic studies TSA plays a role in that. But in terms of like planning, turning people out, like it's a whole production. It's a ton of work. And it's not owned just by like, you know, one person. A lot of people have been sharing it. But would this role play a role in, um, would this position play a role in kind of overseeing those two? Because I think that's a bucket of work that maybe we're not really identi- like calling out, but it's, it's a ton of work, staff work that goes into these monthly affinity-based celebrations. So how do we, um, what role does the director play in that? Can you understand?
I, I think the director would play a really key role there. Um, I know you brought up the ethnic studies TSA. And that's really why I wanted to preface that org chart as being sort of a, a sample org chart and it's not finalized. I know that I will be having a conversation with our ethnic studies TSA to see if this department under a Director of Equity and Achievement Belonging is better aligned with the work that our ethnic studies TSA is doing, potentially having that TSA housed in this department. So it, it is something I am looking at, um, and sort of discussing. I know Dr. Stevens and I are also chatting about that as well. That this, you know, I want to be mindful that we don't want the director to have to own all of that work because it is our work. Um, not just one person, um, but it does help to have someone sort of guiding that work, uh, that we do. And definitely those heritage month activities, those are team efforts for sure. That's not a single person.
Totally. And so I guess like that would be my like, um, I don't know, uh, my amendment or constructive feedback about the position is if that was somehow kind of called out in it.
Okay. That's the other duties as assigned that we add to most.
That, okay, maybe later. I'll, that's, I'll take that. That's mine.
The last line item on the job description.
Thank you for the catchall.
Uh, I'm going to go to Vice President Babett next, but I just want to remind everyone that it is eleven fifteen. Uh, and we have extended the meeting already to eleven twenty five and we can't extend it further. And we still have two other action items after this one. So just wanted to keep that on everyone's radar. Vice President Babett?
Uh, thank you. I'll be brief. I, um, am in support of a supervisor for family engagement and equity. I am not. I am not in support of this position, because I think it is the one position that is supposed to catch all things, that are supposed to actually be integrated. And it, um, it literally moves people outside of the level of accountability. For example, our RTI teachers, um, they really work with their principals, and they work with the K-3 director. So now we've added somebody in here, and I don't even know how that fits in the, um, whole evaluation chart, or how, how are they going to be more effective with RTI specialists all across the district than the principals themselves, who report to the K-through-eight director? Um, I'm also not in support of this position, because, uh, with the Personnel Commission, we've been working on, um, trying to develop pathways for our classified staff to be able to move into upper-level management. So the minute you make this certificated, once again, um, people who've been in OFI, for example, for several years, they, they're not even eligible now to apply to be the, the lead of their department. Um, and, um, lastly, equity inclusion and belonging is everyone's job. And the bulk of what we did in our resolutions, in all of the resolutions, was around making sure this stuff hit first-level instruction. It was in trying to make sure that these things were actually integrated. Um, and so, and so, you know, they didn't do it. So once again, we put this on this other person to do, and we think they're going to be able to get teachers, staff, everybody from all over the district, to do what people in their line of chain of command have literally not been able to get people to do. For example, RTI data collection. If the principals aren't already doing that, how is this person going to make sure that the, the central TSA person that we've had already is not doing it? When, when Brea talks to our RTI specialist, they haven't even come up with what are the actual metrics that they can actually input properly and actually keep up with, and still work with students to try and move the needle? So, I'm gonna know.
Can I just clarify one, one piece of that? The RTI TSA's, they are directly supervised by the principals, that, that supervision structure wouldn't change for those. That, even with this representation on the org chart, they, they, those TSA's are still supervised directly by the principals, and that would remain. That's not a change.
But the person who the principals report to is the K-3 director. So why now are we, how, how is this person responsible for these people that don't report to them? That, that makes no sense to me.
So the RT, uh, so the shift right now, so the current RTI structure in our district, there's multiple layers before the, the K-8 director. Art, so we have a site RTIs, there's one centralized RTI TSA who's a colleague, a peer of the, the site-based TSA's. It's, they're not management, they're just a peer, but they're centrally based. Um, and that person, the central office-based RTI TSA, reports to our certificated PD coordinator right now. That's who their main point of contact is, not necessarily the Director of K8 Schools, even though that PD coordinator is also then housed under the K8 Schools. So there's multiple layers right now with, um, touchpoints to a director, in fact, right now with the TSA's. So this would actually potentially help streamline that work within the Director of Equity Achievement and Belonging. But I, I hear your, your, your points, Vice President Babbitt. Thank you.
Are you ready for a motion, President Brown?
Uh, I wanted to ask my questions, if that's okay with you, Director Alper. Uh, so, Associate Superintendent Aurelio, I appreciated in the beginning of the meeting how you took time to talk about the historical origin of this. Uh, I do have questions, however, a, a couple of questions, however, that are directly tied to that. So when we first presented the Director of OFI role, we presented it based off of, um, a huge point of need, or area of need for the district. Um, and so the elimination of that role, uh, to some may bring us to, uh, the point of understanding that those needs are, are somehow, or have somehow disappeared, and we know that.
That is not, no.
And so, um, maybe you can help us understand how, uh, this new role still addresses all of those additional things that we put in that Director of OFI, as well as, um, taking on all of these other tasks, and how someone would be able to do that well.
Well, one, we would be expanding it as a department, um, versus, sort of, with OFI was just a singular sort of, I would say, focus around the family engagement and equity. This expansion now would bring in, for example, the African-American Success Program Manager. So there's another management component there that would help distribute some work. You'd have, if we keep the OFI Supervisor, there was, there's that partnership layer. So you have multiple managers that are built into this sort of more robust department now that would hold not just the engagement side of the house, but also some of the achievement and the other components. There's the, the layer of a CCAS coordinator that would also be part of this mix, um, to help focus that attention. I mean, we've, what we heard earlier, we need this light shined on our practices, right? That we, we saw how the data looks for African-American students, for our vision scholars at these schools. That's where the focus needs to be. Um, and we know it's a big task. It's a big task for anybody right now to be doing, and we, and we know that. So I, what, my hope is that this director, being partnered with Ed Services, OFI prior to this year was not within Ed Services, OFI was actually reporting directly to the superintendent. So we did bring them in. I've personally had the, the, the pleasure of leading the OFI staff over the past few months, and I've gotten to know them quite well. Um, we did a presentation for you all the last meeting. And it's been really fantastic to see and learn from them and the work they do. And they, they obviously need a leader or two to be supporting their work and giving them that guidance. And so I think this position would help in all those facets.
Okay. Uh, thank, thank you for that information. I do have a couple of other questions. We only have two more minutes until the meeting, so let's go ahead and, um, call for the motion.
I'll move to approve that one.
Moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasutav. Excuse me, Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Mascari, yes, one?
Yeah.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasubev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
No.
President Brown?
Uh, I'm going to abstain. I needed a point of, uh, unreadiness in regards to, uh, making the classi, uh, the position classified instead of certificated, and we didn't take that point. And we only have two more minutes left, so the motion, the motion carries, and the position is approved. Okay. Uh, let's move on to item eleven point ten point twelve. Um, is there a motion to?
I'll move.
Uh, it's been moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Student Director Mascari, yes, one. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Mascari, yes, one?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
No, Director Sinai.
You have to recuse yourself, Director Sinai.
Oh, I'm sorry, I recuse myself.
Okay. Um, Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasubev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Now we need to move to item eleven point four. Really quickly, up thirty seconds, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'm moved by Director Sinai, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Director.
You said, you said eleven point four. Do you mean thirteen point four?
Yes, I do mean thirteen point four.
Okay.
Um, thirteen point four, SB fourteen seventy-nine, to be specific. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Student Director Mascari, yes, one?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasubev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
I abstain, because I don't know what competing funding this may draw from, from the state.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we will now move to the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands. Oh, there is one hand, um, Lynn Soffel, for public comment. Um, Ms. No, Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Ms. Soffel? Ms. Soffel, you have one minute. Miss, uh, direct, Vice President Babbitt, I'm going to ask you to give the timekeeper.
I'm going to make this really fast. I, I really appreciate all the coordination of all the different programs that everybody is trying to kind of corral. Um, but I haven't seen the motion and the movement on the Tier One education and the plans to make true changes that will help us, um, reach everybody with a curriculum in general education. I wish that we could see the literacy, um, a report on the literacy settlement, and I'd like to see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, and then for staying here a little bit later. Uh, we will now move for the second opportunity for board member comments. Seeing then, uh, our meeting is adjourned at eleven twenty-six PM. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Bye.